Okay, we'll begin with open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for citizens to speak about items not listed on the agenda. In order to address city council, please complete the open forum form and submit it to the city secretary prior to the start of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, city council shall not discuss, deliberate, or make any decisions on items discussed during open forum. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Open forum is limited to the first five citizens who submitted an open forum form. The items, or some of the items tonight relate vaguely to the agenda, so at the council's discretion, we're going to allow the open forum rather than waiting for a specific item in the agenda tonight. So the first one is Mary Roan.
My name is Mary Roan, 700 Northwood Circle. Thank you for hearing me on this issue. I would like to address an issue that you're going to discuss in the executive session, specifically the annual evaluation of our city manager. I want to remind you and have you think about while you're deliberating and discussing this, that there is a huge chunk of safety and confidence lost in this city, as you well know. I'm not the only one that feels this way because we, there was a witch hunt from June of last year till May of this year. We lost a good, solid chief of police that served Nacogdoches faithfully, honorably, for 16 years. He took on jobs that you could trust him with, that you knew he could do, and he did that. And then all of this happened, and I want you to remember that when you discuss this annual evaluation of the man who fired our chief of police. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ed Langley.
Mayor, Mayor and council people, thanks for moving this up so I won't miss my nap, okay? Thank you. Very simple. Any money that's spent by the city council, or indebtedness, we'll say, that taken on by the city council, not covered with regular receivables, should be put to a vote for the people of Nacogdoches. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Ann Keenan.
Hello. I just wanted to speak for a few minutes on an issue that is important to all of us right now. It's hot outside, hotter than it's ever been in large parts of the world, and it's well known that this is aggravated, at least by climate change, which is caused by the carbon that's in the atmosphere. Despite all the work that's been done and the 30 years that we've known about this, last year more carbon was emitted in the atmosphere than ever before, and it's only going to get hotter. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that and encourage us all and our cities well to bear that in mind when we make decisions about our community and even ourselves, to do what we can to reduce our carbon footprints. The other night at the brewery, someone was telling me about some great new solar energy projects going on in Nacogdoches, and that was so exciting. I know that there's a lot we can do, and I don't want us to get overwhelmed with the items that are high urgency, that are right in front of us, and forget about this most important issue that's really going to affect our grandchildren more than us. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final is Brad Maul.
I don't know when this is correct to do. My name's Brad Maul. Two years ago, the city of Nacogdoches was almost drowning in cash. We had a rainy day fund saved up for emergencies, loans and bonds that were about to be paid off this year, in fact, brand-new schools being built all over town, vast amounts of COVID relief money pouring in from the state and the nation, property taxes at an all-time high, special fees added to the water bills, just in case we needed more money, the lowest interest rates anyone alive could remember, houses selling like hotcakes, and with the exception of all the sickness and death from COVID-19, these were amazing times for the city of Nacogdoches. And somehow, in the last two years, we've managed to blow it. Suddenly, water pipes are failing, sewage is backing up, streets are full of potholes, drains don't work, we need more parks and restrooms, the county needs a new jail, the fire department, which is a great department, needs $8 million. The police, who are great, are understaffed. We've lost our tax assessor of 43 years and our chief of police after 16 years, and City Hall is literally falling down around us, or so I hear. I'm just asking, what did we do wrong? What did we, the citizens of Nacogdoches, do wrong? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move to the consent agenda and any items to be removed from the consent agenda. And I want to remind you that we do have Mr. Bolden and Mr. Huckabee are remote. Okay? Here, none? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor signal I'm saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. All right, well, that will move to 6B. Consider approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 74 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Nacogdoches to expand the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. During, I think I talked to you about this at the last meeting, the advisory board was not included in the agenda items, so we were not able to take action on appointing advisory board members. Additionally, as the council was doing the interviews and considering members for the advisory board, it came to our attention that there were some, there were more than the seven that we could appoint that we felt were really qualified. So with that, we would, we would suggest to you, or we would, I would make a motion that we expand the, we change the ordinance regarding the Parks Board.
Seven to eleven.
That would give us a range of membership from seven to 11.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor? I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Yeah, may I speak, please?
Yes, sir, please.
I've looked at a lot of cities in the range of our population and our geographic size, and not one of them had more than seven members on the advisory board. And it seems as if any more than that number for that size, information was redundant, repetitive, and overlapping. Now, there, the city decides of San Antonio, the metro areas carry 11 members. I do not believe that there is a need to add up to 11 members on our advisory board for the size of the city and the activities that goes on within the city. And there were some cities that even had as low as five that was city, that was city residents, and two that was not in the city. And then there were some cities that had ad hoc members, as to where if they needed expertise in a certain field that was not on the board, then they would bring in an ad hoc member to give information on the expertise of what they were looking for, but they weren't allowed to vote. And that is just my statement.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir. Mr. Huckabee.
I just want to say that I think amending this ordinance will give us the opportunity to have a range of people, if the council sees fit, to increase the size when we have great people like we did in the interviews that we conducted over the last two weeks. And I think at this time, we'll be able to move it up if we decide in the future that we only have seven active members of that board, we'll be able to reduce the size without having to amend an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Huckabee. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The point that I was trying to make is, we have seven qualified names chosen to be on this board. Any of the other names probably have the same qualification and have the same agenda, and it just gets to be redundant when you keep adding people with the same agenda and the same ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signal I'm saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
All right, that carries.
Mayor, let me interject. You do need to state on the record that 6A is being pulled from the agenda tonight.
Okay. We, just, why? Okay, 6A is a public hearing. Consider a request to amend and/or revoke the specific use permit pursuant to Section 118-174 of the Code of Ordinances for a garden shop and plant sales, display or greenhouse in a B1 local business zoning district for Lot 1, Block 1 of the Plant Shed subdivision located at 3123 Appleby Sand Road. This request has been initiated by the Nacogdoches City Planner, and this item had to be postponed because of a lack of a quorum in person tonight, and so the plan would be to have it on the agenda for August the 16th.
Correct. Thank you.
Can I move out of order? Skip C, she's getting, Jan's getting some information.
Sir, Lawrence.
Okay, move on to 6D. Consider approval of a contract bond between the City of Nacogdoches and Drury Construction Company for the 2022 Seal Coat Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $414,644, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just bear with me one second while I pull this up, please. Okay. I'm Case Offerman, Assistant City Engineer and Assistant Director of Public Works, coming to you this evening, asking you to consider approval of a contract buying between the City of Nacogdoches and Drury Construction for the 2022 Seal Coat Project. This will be in a not-to-exceed amount of $414,644. You'll remember back in April that we, due to an increase in oil pricing and material, and decrease in material availability with the aggregate that we use, had to cancel the 2021 Seal Coat Project. At that time, we said that we would monitor availability of materials and come back with a project hopefully later this summer to do these streets that we were going to do. And at this time, we've been in contact with contractors who've been monitoring supply, and the material availability is a little better right now. We also asked them about availability of an alternate material. It's a lighter weight aggregate versus the more coarse-grade aggregate that we originally had bid. That is a lot more available and actually cheaper. So what we decided to do was rebid these streets with the original material, just to see what kind of pricing we could get, and also to, as an alternate bid item, bid out this lighter-weight pre-coded aggregate as well. So we got bids for that on July 11th. We only wound up receiving one bid, but this bid, we feel, was, you know, consistent with the market that we're seeing on other projects. It was from Drury Construction. It was the base bid, which was the original, basically the original project, the original aggregate, the original oil, came in at $481,144. With doing the original oil and the alternate material, it came out to $414,644. So about $70,000 difference there. And I'll note that the alternate option is below budget, whereas the original option is actually above budget. This lighter-weight aggregate, while it is lighter weight, it's very commonly used. The state of Texas uses it all the time, Texas DOT uses it all the time. So it's a very well-established product. It's just not, not going to be as, you know, as hard as the other, but it performs the function just fine. So what our recommendation tonight is, is that you would approve the base and alternate bid item, which would be the oil and the lighter-weight aggregate, which again is more available than the original aggregate, in the amount of $414,644. I would be happy to answer any questions after a public comment.
Okay, is there any public comment? All right. Any council comments?
Some question. I think you answered it. Is there like a difference in the number of years it's supposed to hold up, or, you know, any data that you can see differences in?
It's, you know, as far as what we call roller skate rock, it's the, the original is a little more, you know, it's a little better for residential, just as far as, you know, kids roller skating, hunting, it's not as, not as bumpy, not as rough. But, but the product, you know, each product performs just fine. You know, there's no difference in expected life that I'm aware of. It's just an alternate, an alternate material. So we expect, we expect the same life expectancy out of these streets as we would with the original.
But we just can't roller skate as well.
Just don't get out there on your roller skates, is all we're asking. Hey, do it if you want to. I'm not going to.
No, that was my question.
Mr. Huckabee?
Yes, really, the only question I have here is regarding the financing of this project. Was this already built into our fiscal year '21, '22 budget?
Yes, sir, this is, this is already budgeted. It's actually coming out of our CIP Annual Street Rehab Budget. So yes, sir, it is, it is part of the normal budget, and it is, this project is under budget.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Bolden?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to make a comment, and I'm just hoping that the difference, that $6,000 to $7,000 is not taking us away from a quality product. Thank you.
No, sir, I don't believe that it will be any, any less quality at all. As I said, the, the state of Texas uses this, they, I don't even know that they use the material that we used to use. This is what they expect normally, to my knowledge, this lighter-weight aggregate. So very, very well-established product.
Okay.
I also wanted to thank you for being on top of it and coming back.
Well, you're very welcome. We're glad we're able to get them in this year. It's really what we're hoping for, so.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I move to approve?
Oh, sorry. So I would just, yes, D.
Good, I got it.
I don't want to get us confused off.
Thank you. It helps. I move to approve item D, the contract buying between the City of Nacogdoches and Drury Construction in the amount presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Have a second, Mr. Huckabee. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal I'm saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. All right. If you will, we'll move back to 6C, and that's consider appointing members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Again, this was left off the agenda last time, and so this is our last appointment for, for this six-month term. The Nacogdoches Parks Board had seven members, three, three whose terms were up, two who have reapplied, and that is Christie Turner and Lauren Tyler. And then additionally, the council reviewed application for Rodney Ray, Charles Gregory, Angela Williams, and Abby Cheveria. So I would propose, make a motion that we appoint those, which would be a total of 10, to the Nacogdoches Parks Board.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Those in favor signal I'm saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Here is. Move on to 6E. Consider approval of an administration project delivery service provider to complete application and project implementation for the City of Nacogdoches 2023-2024 Community Development Block Grant, TXCDBG, funded and administered through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Purchasing Contract Specialist. Mr. Flores, how are you?
Good morning, council members. How are you?
Good.
My name is Drew Flores. I'm the purchasing specialist for the city, and today I will be giving a brief presentation for your consideration and approval of a grant administration contract with Grant Works for the 2324 CDBG program. So the Community Development Block Grant Program is offered by the Texas Department of Agriculture. It's for rural economic development. It's in the amount of $500,000, and it is offered on a 24-month cycle. So the grant that we will be applying for is for the 2324 fiscal year. We plan to apply for it in the spring of 2023, and we're looking to enter into an agreement with Grant Works to handle the application process, as well as the implementation and the award and management of the funds. We have submitted the RFP to seven firms. Of those seven, three responded. One was a declination, and the other two were submitted proposals from KSBR and from Grant Works. The scoring totals were as followed, and the committee consisted of myself and Sam Kramer, the project engineer for the city. And our evaluation found Grant Works to be the most qualified by unanimous decision. That was for cost as well as qualifications. Some other information is that the grant does allow for funds to be allocated for grant administration services. Therefore, if be, if awarded, the city will incur no budgetary impact in hiring the grant administration firm. If not awarded the grant, there are no upfront costs or fees from the firm. The contract is contingent on award of the grant. There is a grant match requirement. The match must be equal to or greater than 15%. And the city must also have a current 2021 audit, and the city's low to moderate income will be another factor that will come into consideration for the Texas Department of Agriculture to award. Finally, the 23 to 24 eligible activities list has not been published by the Department of Agriculture yet, and I'm keeping an eye on that to be released, but the 2122 eligible activities list is available for review. And from what I could tell, there's very little deviation in what actually will be on that list. Here is a, an abridged list from that 2122 eligible activities. I do have the complete list available and can furnish that upon request. I just wanted to give a kind of a, an overview as opposed to the whole comprehensive list in a PowerPoint. That being said, I will yield to council and the public for any questioning, and if I do not have the capacity to answer some questions, I have Pam Curbo, and then also Shawna Mackelfish from Grant Works is also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Is there any public comment? Okay. Council, any, any questions? I'll start with Mr. Bolden.
No, I'm familiar with Grant Works, and they've already done a great job.
Okay. Mr. Huckabee?
None at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher?
I know.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Can you pull up the list of?
Absolutely.
For this year? So I'm, I'm looking at all the different eligible activities, and I would imagine they, the CDBG dollars are usually about the same kinds of activities they fund. I see sidewalks, sewer, fire stations, residential, historic preservation, all of these are items that, and when do you expect that the categories will be, the eligible activities will be posted?
For the 2324 fiscal year? I am unaware. I did some research to see if I could kind of determine when they do release those, but I had no luck in doing so. I did speak to a couple of individuals at Grant Works, and they do say that, and I did look up the eligible activities from prior years, and they do seem to have very little variance between each other. So as I said, if I, I could furnish the complete list for you, and you can take a look at the complete list, it was just way too much for a PowerPoint.
These are, categories are great. And did you say 2223, or is this?
2324. So the 24-month cycle with, you know, skipping a year. So yeah, that's the year we will be applying for.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do I have a motion on E?
So move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bolden? Any further discussion? Those in favor signal I'm saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Move to F. Consider approval of the city's partially self-insured, thank you, Mr. Flores, self-insured health insurance plans and ancillary benefits between the city and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, MetLife Insurance and Lincoln Financial, and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary renewal contract documents. Benita Hall, how are you tonight?
Good evening. Fine, thank you.
Mr. Summers? Welcome.
Benita Hall, Human Resources. I am here to gladly introduce Jeff Summers, who is the city's consultant. He is with BXs Insurance, and I'm just going to turn the floor over to him.
Thank you. Jan, are you gonna move this? Or are you gonna meet me? Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, present and remote, thank you for having me tonight. Again, my name is Jeff Summers. I'm with BXs Insurance. What I'm going to go through this evening is a PowerPoint presentation on this renewal for the upcoming plan year. The first you'll see is a background that talks about the benefits offered through the city to the employees and dependents, and then also the renewal process for this year. You'll see that the first three bullet points are built around health and dental insurance, and then the next three bullet points you'll see will be the ancillary products that are offered to the city employees and dependents. The City of Nacogdoches offers health and dental insurance for employees and dependents. The health insurance policy is a partially self-insured plan, and what that means is that there is, there is a self-insured component, but it's backed by reinsurance. Reinsurance consists of individual insurance for anyone that goes over $125,000, and then what we call aggregate insurance, that is all claims that are under $125,000. Once they reach a certain amount, the city is no longer responsible for that. That's what the partially self-insured means. On the dental insurance, that is truly self-insured. Typically, no catastrophic claims in dental insurance, and so you pay an administration fee to the administrator, and then the claims are all paid by, by the, by the city on that. The City of Nacogdoches went out for formal RFPs this year for health and dental insurance, and for the first time, employer-paid long-term disability insurance. Blue Cross Blue Shield and United Healthcare were the two providers that actually proposed this year for the medical and dental insurance, and then on the long-term disability, it was three carriers that went into that. At the end of negotiations, the committee concluded that Bancorp, that Blue Cross Blue Shield was the most competitive. And really, what went into that were a lot of different components. Fixed costs, which fixed costs, when I refer to that, is your reinsurance and administration cost. And even though that United Healthcare was a little bit lower on the reinsurance cost, they had some things built into their reinsurance cost that would make it prohibitive for us to, for the city to go with the United Healthcare. And what that's called is typically what's called lasers. And that means that if you have $125,000 that's based specific deductible on each person, someone with a real high claimant, or someone with real high claims could have an additional amount tacked on to that. And we had one that was well over $300,000, and so at that point, it's an additional $175,000 liability to the city. And the rates were not that much different on the, on the reinsurance side to make United Healthcare win that particular part of the bid. Then you had the projected and maximum claims liability. Blue Cross Blue Shield was actually lower on, on that. And we look at also discounts. 80% of your plan are made up of your medical and pharmacy cost, and so it's a really big portion of the plan. And so it's a really big portion of the plan, obviously. And so discounts play a big portion of that. And Blue Cross Blue Shield was better overall in the discount side of things when it came to how much was going to be discounted off the claims. So at the end of the day, Blue Cross Blue Shield was the preferred vendor on that. And they have been the vendor with, for Blue Cross Blue, for the city for many, many years. And to kind of go back to the RFP process, this was an RFP process, was a sealed bid. Every year, we actually do informal or formal. Depends on the time of the year that we do that. It is required, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kirkland, at least no more than every three years, you have to do a formal RFP that is a sealed bid. And then when it's not during that cycle, we actually can do informal inquiries to carriers to make sure the city is still getting the best overall pricing and plan designs for the employees of Nacogdoches. Am I correct on that? Okay. And then now getting to the, getting to the actual employer-paid disability. This is a new product right now, employer-paid disability. It's not employer-paid. It's voluntary. And so employees can pick and choose if they want long-term disability or not. And during the talks that we have on a quarterly basis, it was brought up that there's a lot of talk about having more of a benefit to the city in things that are paid for by the city. And this is one we thought that could be within budget and also provide a really nice benefit to that, especially when there's so many police and fire out there. Buying disability on your own is very prohibitive. And then even on a voluntary basis, it's pretty costly for the employees to do that, especially for fire and police. It's such a dangerous occupation. So we actually went out to the market on that as well as a sealed RFP, and MetLife was the most competitive on that particular product. The city also offers other ancillary products like employer-paid life insurance, the amount of $20,000, voluntary life, so if someone wants to participate and purchase more life insurance, they can on themselves, their spouse, and their kids. Like I said, there's voluntary long-term disability currently, voluntary vision insurance also is included in the package as well. All of these plans are what's called fully insured plans. There's not any self-insurance that goes into these type of plans. Okay? Next page. I'm going to go over a little bit of claims experience. You know, when I stood up here last year at this time, claims were really, really good. You can see from June 1 through May 21, the overall total cost of the plan was $2.8 million. This year, you can see down there at the total cost, it's already up to $3,478,000 in the last 12 months. The gross medical claims paid before any stop-loss reimbursement is up 90% year-over-year. Three, almost 1.7 million versus a little over $3.2 million. The majority of that, when you're going to see in some of my other claims experience, is in large claims. We actually had over two claims this year over $500,000. And the year before, we did not have any. And so most of the increase you're seeing here is because of the large claims that are out there. The net medical claims is after reinsurance is paid, so it's still up about $500,000 overall. The pharmacy was really under what we call inflation for pharmacy. It's at 4.2%. But what you're going to see later on when I talk about this is that 48% of the pharmacy costs are in specialty drugs. And there's a very few percentage of the population that's covered under the plan that takes specialty drugs but drives 48% of the total cost. So it's a very big deal, and we're really going to work on that. And I'm going to address that in the plan design discussion. And then you have administration and reinsurance, which I talked about at the fixed cost items. And they're up 12% year-over-year. That's mainly because of the reinsurance cost. Administration fees have actually come down, but reinsurance costs have gone up. And it's mainly in the individual stop-loss area. It's not in the aggregate stop-loss. So it's mainly because of large claims and the reinsurance being more expensive to cover that part of the plan. Next is your high-cost claimant history. You can see based on the bands here that really, not a lot of difference when you get to the 50 to 75. There's one more this year than there was last year. There's one more between 75 and 100 than there was last year. The same between 100 and 200,000, one in each category. None between 200 and 250. They both had between 250 and 500 this year. But what stands out is there's two that's over 500,000. And I would, obviously, for HIPAA purposes, we don't talk about who these people are. But we do get diagnosis on those, and both of those are still on the plan and with ongoing conditions. So that does make it a little bit more difficult. When we were talking about the renewal this year in our committee, that we talked about what's going to happen this year because we had such a, as you saw on the first page, an increase in the overall cost. And we were very, very concerned with what the renewal was actually going to look like. And so we did, we did talk to, I know that the staff, Ms. Benita talked with the staff about what things might have to be done this year. And part of it was increases premiums to the employees, and then some pretty radical plan design changes that would affect the employees as well. But I'm here to tell you this evening that we were able to really stay away from both of those. When we finally got everything negotiated and everything put in place with some things that we're going to ask the council to do tonight, but I think you'll be very pleased with the outcomes of what we have. The current fund balance is obviously very important to keep the plan healthy. And you can see October 1 of last year, which is the start of the plan year. So everything I talk about tonight is going to go into effect on October 1. But at the start of the plan year, we had almost $2 million in fund balance, which is the most we've had going all the way back to 2013. You can see in 2016, it was getting a little bit nerve-wracking at the end of that year because it was going down pretty fast and having some pretty bad years. But then it started to really accumulate over the next several years. But you can see this year, we've had to draw down on fund balance around $400,000. And so always a concern. We always would like to have $2 million. We would like to have more than that if we could because when you see the maximum overall exposure is going to be close to $4 million. So you'd at least have to have, like to have half of that in a fund reserve. Okay? So here are the current funding rates. And when we talk about funding rates, funding rates is to try to predict what your claims are going to be. And of course, we know pretty much what your fixed costs are going to be for the year. And the $660 is what your current funding rates that the city actually pays for. And that hasn't changed in three years. That stayed exactly the same. And we haven't really done that much to the employee cost either over those last three years. Last year, when I came to you, we did not have any increases at all for any of the products. But when you, when you look at the contributions from the city and employees this year, it's estimated to be almost $3.1 million. And I made a footnote at the bottom of that page. We budget for 324 employees, but we actually have around 310 on the plan because those are positions that could be filled, up to 324 total people. So we budget for that amount, and then you'll see the actual amount that the employees actually pay, a little over $528,000. So that's what makes up the $3.1 million of contributions from the city. The expected costs for the 2021-22 plan year were $3.2 million. And the maximum, it's a very important number to know because that's the worst-case scenario, was around $3,765,000. We would always like to fund between expected and maximum. But you can see in this particular year, we weren't able to do so. We kept it the same. Part of that was budget, and part of that is we were coming off a very, very good year of $2.8 million. And so when you come off a $2.8 million year, hope is never a good idea. But history said we were doing well, and we could, we could, we could fund the $3.1 million. And plus, budget constraints kept us from going above the 660. And then we also wanted to make sure that we didn't increase any of the employee cost as well. But you can see over the last 12 months, it's gone to 3.4. So it's that number that we always talk about, trying to be between expected and maximum liability at that point. So for the next year, here is our recommendations. That we increase the city funding to $725. That's roughly 10% increase over current. What the employees will like to see is there's no recommended increase to any of the employee rates for all eight tiers. Remember, we run two different plans. We have a base plan and a buy-up plan. So no increases to the employees for this particular plan year. And then the contributions. We're also asking that the council vote to take $350,000 from the CARE Act Fund for COVID relief. We had a little over, for the last two and a half years, the COVID expenses to the city have ran a little over $325,000. So it could make sense to take $350,000 and do a one-time infusion into the, into the fund, to the contributions. And so when you add the two together, it's around a six, almost a $600,000 increase to funding without changing anything for the employees. And you'll also see that the expected cost and maximum cost, you're funding between the two. So you're really in that spot that you want to be. If you look at where we started at this whole process, the maximum cost this year, $3.9 million. And then last year, you don't have to go back, Jan. But last year was $3,765,000. It's a 3.8% increase to maximum cost. From the top of the year that we had, I think the entire committee thought that was a win when we were out, when we were negotiating with Blue Cross and the other carrier about how the maximum liability was going to come out. So I thought that was a very, very nice overall ending to the negotiation process. Next is some things that we would like to change in the plan design. Remember earlier, I said that there might have, when we were talking earlier, that there could be some major changes to the plan design. We were able to get away from that and just have a few. And you can see that there's four different line items that we would like to address and make some changes to. The Affordable Care Act sets the maximum out-of-pocket at $8,700 on an individual, and then $17,400 for a family. So even on the base plan, we would keep it under what the Affordable Care Act has as their maximum liability. So we would move from $7,900 to $8,500 for an individual, and then $15,800 to $17,000 for a family. Now, remember that all your deductibles, your coinsurance, your medical co-pays, and your prescription co-pays will go towards that out-of-pocket maximum. And once they reach that on a calendar-year basis, then they don't pay anymore. I'm talking about the employees or dependents if they meet that. This is really designed for the, this, this, this plan design change is for the high-end user, people that are using the plan. Only about 15 or 20 people out of the 450 total people on the plan ever reached their out-of-pocket maximum in a year. So we're talking about the folks that have the high-end utilization on that. We also asked that you, that you change this, have an actual specialist office visit because a specialist is more expensive than going to your primary care doctor. And we've always kept that the same at a $45 co-pay. So we're asking for that to go to a $65 co-pay. And then emergency rooms. Really, part, one of the most expensive parts of the plan is when you have to go into the emergency room. And there are several urgent care facilities in town, and of course, two emergency rooms attached to a hospital, and then one that's not attached to the hospital. Remember that the one not attached to the hospitals, that's an emergency room, is not in the network for Blue Cross Blue Shield or United Healthcare. They are not in the network. And so it's very important to know. And those are, when you go to that facility or urgent care facilities, those are typically minor emergencies. So during our education processes that will start in the next couple of weeks, we really try to educate the employees about urgent care centers versus the emergency room. But we would ask that you increase the emergency room co-pay to $500. And always remember that that will be waived if they're admitted to the hospital. So if you go to the emergency room and you have to be admitted, that co-pay will be waived. And then lastly, on the plan design is just an increase to the, to brand-name drugs. The utilization for your generic drugs is around 85%, but it only is about 20% of the cost. The other parts of the cost are in brand-name drugs. And so even though 85% of your prescriptions are paid on a generic basis, they're only 20% of the cost because they're a lot less expensive than the brand-name drugs. So we would ask that we go up $10 on what's called a preferred brand name and $10 on a non-preferred brand name. And then here's the biggest adjustment. The 150 currently is for specialty drugs. These are drugs that are anywhere from $3,000 a month up to $30,000 a month. So if you, as an employee, paid $150, and it's a $17,000 drug, the city pays the difference. That, in our opinion, is the same as having triple bypass surgery because that is taken every single month. And so at the end of the year, that could be $150,000 easily paid for by the city. Now, that would be capped at $125,000. But again, it's really no different than a major surgery at that point. So what we're seeing in the marketplace is having a 20% to a $600 monthly maximum. So the most that they would be out for their drugs is $7,200 in a year. And that would, remember, that does go towards your out-of-pocket maximum. So if someone's had some other things throughout the year that had, if they had to go to the doctor for things, had a surgery, things like that, they would be out-of-pocket a very small amount, and then they wouldn't pay anymore for the rest of the, for the rest of the year, excuse me. There is around eight employees right now that take a specialty drug. So, and there's also, when you have $150 co-pay, it's, you're not incentivized to try to go out and find manufacturing coupons and employee assistance programs that are out there. And when you have a, when you have a plan that has, that you could have to pay up to $600, it will get them more aggressively searching for those types of alternatives. And your physician that is prescribing that medication will also help you very much on that sort of thing. So those are the four plan design changes that we would, we would recommend for this year. But again, leaving the deductible the same, leaving the coinsurance the same. Still, preventative services are covered at 100%. Routine lab and x-rays are covered at 100%. We want to encourage people to go to the urgent care centers. We left that the same. So a lot of the same for people that just have normal utilization in the plans. Again, this is really designed to, to affect the folks that really highly utilize the plan and do it in really an expensive way. Next is the dental insurance. This is even some better news on this. We've actually recommended that we increase the dental benefits. As you can see, the city of Nacogdoches pays $30 towards each employee for dental insurance. It still can be voluntary, but they're paying for basically the employee-only coverage at this point. As you can see, the employee doesn't pay anything for that. And this hasn't changed. This started two years ago. This will be our third year on a self-insured dental plan. And it's really worked well. And so the rates will not change here. Recommended won't change. And you can see the current contributions from the city on an annual basis. Same rule of thumb, 324 employees generates $116,000 in premium. And then the contributions from employees, a little over $56,000. So 17, almost $173,000 of contributions. And here is the estimated fixed cost and projected claims for the upcoming plan year. So even if we moved to the proposed plan, you're still having, making revenue to put into your fund balance for that. So the dental plan, like I talked about, is giving everybody a 50% increase in their benefits, going from $1,000 to $1,500 on your basic major services and preventative services, and also on your orthodontic services as well. And no waiting periods for this. So when someone signs up for dental insurance, they can use it immediately. So here's in summary. Medical insurance for the employees, no rate adjustments. So 0% for the employees independent. A 9.8% increase going from 660 to 725 dollars per employee per month. And then on the comment side, 350,000 requested from the CARE Act fund. Now do remember that that 350,000 again is a one time infusion. So that would need to be made up next year. So we'll ask Ms. Kerbo to try to find that money next year when, when the renewal comes up next year. Dental insurance, a zero increase to the employees, but increasing the benefits 50%. We were also able to get Blue Cross, Blue Shield to be very aggressive on employer paid life, voluntary term life and vision insurance. There was a 16% rate decrease. Now that sounds, it's, it's, it's not a lot of money. It's $1,500, but again, it's $1,500 that is, that the, the city of Nacogdoches pays for. And it is a two year rate guarantee on that. Voluntary life insurance was a 0% increase. Still recommended to move to Blue Cross on a two year rate guarantee. And some of the reasons also moving to Blue Cross, Blue Shield is they give what's called packaging discounts off of the medical insurance. And so what I, I didn't include in here, because as it's been voted on, is for the life insurance and the voluntary life insurance, there's an, an additional 1.5% off of the reinsurance rates and a dollar 50 off the admin fees. Which is calculated a little over $20,000 in savings. That's not on my presentation. And so that could also help to pay for the voluntary, or the employer paid long term disability. But we will adjust that after the vote tonight, if that's what the council decides to do. Voluntary vision insurance, again through Blue Cross, Blue Shield. They give a four year rate guarantee. And they actually showed a nice rate reduction on this. And we have two plans that we offer to the city on vision. We've elected to go to one plan. It's the high plan, it's the richer plan. And that came in actually lower than the low plan on overall rates. So I thought that was a very, it's going to be a better plan for everybody. And you see a 7.4% decrease to the rates there. And then the dependents, it varies from tier to employee and spouse, employee, children, employee, family ranges from a 7.1% to a 16.5% rate reduction. And then the, the cost for the volun, or for the employer paid long term disability, based on current covered payroll was 38,831 annually. And again, that's a two year rate guarantee. I'll open it up for questions.
Okay, Mr. Hall, did you have anything to add? Okay. I'd, I'd open to public comment. Is there any, any comment from the crowd? Okay, council, questions, Mr. Bolden?
Um, just, the pharmacy part of it just boggles my mind. That is quite a big number. I mean, I understand the need, but that is a very large number. That's just a comment.
I understand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hockbee?
Yeah, I have to agree with Mr. Bolden on that. That's, that's an awfully big increase. I know it doesn't impact a lot of our employees. And the discussion is on making the impetus for employees to go out and seek additional discounts. But I think that we, I don't know what our part can be in that. But I feel like we, we need to help them find those, those discounts and those manufacturer, whatever, whatever they offer for those specialty drugs. I know the numbers don't seem like a lot when they're on paper. But the, those of our employees that are expending, you know, significant amounts out of pocket each year, a $750 increase for an individual, that could be a lot for some of our employees. Those are my comments.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure. Yeah. The thought process on that again was, most of these drugs that you're seeing cost well over 75, $80,000 a drug. Skirizzi, which is on the list, is $17,000 a month for that particular drug. And, and Humira, Embryol, all the things you see on TV every day. Those are the ones that they don't talk about how expensive they are. And so for an employee right now, if they're on one of those drugs, they're at $1,800 for the year. So they barely meet their deductible. If, for, for, let's say, an individual that has to go in for a surgery. They're, just someone that goes in for a regular routine surgery, not a major surgery, is gonna, is gonna spend more than they're gonna spend on a drug that's $85,000 a year or more. And so that was the whole intent, was to treat that type of claim like a large claim that you would see when you have to go have a surgery, like a, a triple bypass or, or any major surgery. Or be treatment for cancer coverage or cancer conditions, things like that. That was the thought process. And that's what you're seeing more of a, a move towards in all the plan designs that we see in the marketplace. It's, it's definitely up to the city. This is a partially self insured plan. So the city council can, can vote to lower that. It's just a recommendation on our part to have that number. But you can always make a motion and recommend that we lower that if, if so choose.
Okay. Councilmember Bellinger?
Okay, I have several things.
All right.
First, I, I, pardon me for referring to my cellphone. But I have a lot of very brilliant people who send me thoughts and questions. Somebody asked if we could up the deductible per person from maybe another $500. And then have the city pay that difference in the deductible? Would we save dollars? Do you see what I'm saying?
Sure. I guess you'd have to run, you'd have to actually run the, the claims numbers and see. And there would be some tax implications on that. Because that would actually be considered a taxable event if you're refunding claims dollars from a medical plan. So it would, there would be some other implications on that. But could always run the numbers to see.
Yeah, this came from an accountant. I think it'd be worth it to see if we could save some dollars.
You know, Ms. Bolden, we, we did talk about raising the deductible this year. And doing some things like that. But we, you know, most people, when they look at their plan, they go straight to their co-pays and straight to their deductible on what they're gonna pay. And so that's, and, and most of the people during a year never meet their deductible even.
Right.
And so they meet, they, they use their co-pays all the time. So that's, that's the reason that we wanted to leave the deductible the same. Doesn't make a huge impact on the overall cost of the plan.
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
Raising the deductible doesn't make an impact?
No, not as much.
Okay, that's what the question was. I have some other thoughts, but you can come back to me if you want, or I'm happy to keep going.
Continue.
Go ahead.
Okay, so what is the total cost difference, including the CARES Act or whatever? What is the total increase in cost for the city?
The total maximum claims liability increase went from 3,765,000 to 3,911,000.
What do you project our total cost increase will be to fund this?
The total increase, we're recommending to go from 3.1 million to 3.6 million.
Let me back up. I'm saying the city is contributing, you know, more in different pieces.
Yes.
What, what do you anticipate, including the 350,000 from the CARES Act? And whatever we're contributing, what is the total increase in cost for the coming year? Including the 350,000, 350,000 versus this year?
This year, we, we budgeted for 3,100,000. And in the last 12 months, the actual cost have been almost 3.5 million. So we really needed at least 400,000 just to get even to what we've done the last 12 months. Now, the last 12 months is not indicative of what it's going to be next year. It could be lower, it could be like that 2, 2,800,000 like we had the year before. But it's always, remember, that's a, that's a variable number.
So our current guess is it's 400,000 we're projecting, of which 350,000 is paid out of the CARES Act?
Could be. But remember, remember what I always, when you look back on the, the recommended funding, the expected cost is 3.376, okay? That's the bare minimum. The maximum's 3.9 million dollars. And so with the CARE Acts, with the CARE Act money and the additional funds paid for by the city, it would be just a little under 3.7, which is in between the, the expected and maximum. And that's the preferred rule of thumb for the funding. It really, when you're, when you're talking about this, you would like to fund all the way to the maximum. So the worst case scenario, you have a zero net gain or loss for, for the year. And you always have a chance to get money back. But that would make it very difficult to do that. We'd have to raise an additional almost $250,000 to do that.
Okay. And, and my question is whether it's sustainable, you know, and that's, you know, for the following years. And CARES Act dollars can be spent really because we, they're on, on anything? Or, I mean, I had understood at this point, they could even be spent.
They're currently, sorry, they're currently part of the general fund reserves.
That's right.
And, and so I was gonna back up just, just a little bit and, and try to expand a little bit on that question. And so basically what he's saying is last year we budgeted.
Do you want me to talk into the microphone? Because I'm not sure the people.
Okay. Basically, last year we budgeted the 3.09, the almost 3.1 million. We're budgeting this year to 3.6. So the difference in that's about 580,000 or so. Of that 350 comes from CARES. And the rest of it is coming from the increase in the city's contribution, which was the 660 to the 725 per month that he was mentioning. So that's when he said next year the 350 is a one time infusion. Next year, we're going to have to look at how to replace that if our expected costs next year are the same or more than what they are now. Yeah. So it's, to answer your question, it's about 580,000.
And just to follow up on that, the $350,000 could be spent for anything.
It's general fund reserves. And so they can be any, any one time expenditures in the general fund that you, you so choose.
Again, I just want to point this out. This is, you know, we pull one thing and say, this now becomes our very top priority, more, more important than roads and water. And, and it may be, but I'm just saying that we keep pulling out one item and saying, this is what we're going to spend it on.
So just as a frame of reference, had we not made this transfer, what we would be asking you tonight is to take the $660 per month to $1,010 per month.
Well, I understand that. I'm not.
And, and so that 350 would be an additional operational ask on the general fund side.
Or, or change the, somehow the benefits or do.
That would, that would take very significant changes, I think. But yeah, that's, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I think that's it.
See if you can help me understand something.
Sure.
And this is, understanding this particular topic is not my forte. So I saw where you said that the increase of the city contribution, right? Is so that the employees don't have to have an increase on that side.
Right.
But it seems to me like there, the employees are still getting an increase in cost based on the special, all the, the suggested differences that, that, in the plan design, right? The specialist visits are up, the prescription, which, I mean, I, I, I understand to an extent, giving motivation to employees to find generic drugs or different manufacturers or deals or whatever. But, you know, that's assuming that those things exist. And, and that's a huge burden. So it, it seems like actually, it's not just the city that is increasing or that is bearing the brunt of that financial burden, but the employees too. So it, it, it's not seeming like a win to me in any way. It just, it. Earlier what Ms. Kerbo was explaining, she was saying that the, I guess, explaining the CARES Act money and then the city contribution, that that covers the difference in between what we had last year and what we need to shoot for this year. If that's the case, then why the increase on the burden on the employee side? Does my question make sense?
Oh, absolutely, for sure. The plan design has not been changed in the last two or three years as well as the contributions. They've stayed the same. This is trying to be more proactive to the high end user more than anything. It's not, we, we don't want to be as reactive as try to be proactive. And when we met two or three months ago, when we were looking at the claims, Ms. Fisher, we, we saw that, we, we thought, we had proposals out there to change all these level of benefits, to increase all of them. Deductibles, we were moving the $1,500 deductible over to the 3,000 and making the 3,000 5,000. Because we were looking at the claims and we were thinking, we're gonna have to do some really dramatic things with this. And then when, after the negotiations were over and the maximum liability came in at 3.1, like I said, at 3.8% increase, then we felt like we didn't have to do as much. Because at one time, we felt like we were gonna have to increase contributions from the city and contributions from the employees and change the plan design.
Okay.
And so we felt like, when you talk about the win, obviously, we know that we, we needed some additional funds from the city. Right now, we felt like the most important thing was not to raise rates for the employees. When you're talking about all of the employees. And so when we made the plan design changes, it's just affecting again the high end user. So instead of increasing it for everybody, you did it just for the people that are using the plan in a way we're talking about. That, that's the reasoning for it.
Okay. And so that's what you mean by more proactive to the high end user? It just means shifting the burden more heavily to the people who need it more?
You could look at it that way, yes.
And then sort of a basic, perhaps unrealistic question. But what if we say no to all of the, the, the things that you, that you suggest in your plan design?
On the plan design? You say no and we go back to the current and, and, you know, the current plan designs? And you don't realize any additional savings there. Additional savings are literally probably 2% to 3% of the overall cost of the plan at that point.
But it doesn't change anything in terms of the employer contribution or the CARES Act money? It just affects?
It just affects the plan design.
But financially, what does it affect? I mean, it has to affect something financially because it's money.
Obviously the claims at that point. And, and shifting the burden from how much the, the, the city is paying on those claims versus how much the employees are actually paying, those top end users.
Okay.
At that point, because you're talking about, you're talking about $600 for each employee that goes over 7150 bucks. And then you're talking about the same exact, $600 also for on the, on the base plan. So it's $600 increase for someone that has to reach, you know, was reaching 7,900, now they're reaching 85. That's why I said, there's usually about 15 to 20 total people of all the people, spouses, kids, employees on the plan, 15 to 20 that meet their out of pocket every year. So you're not talking about a lot. And then eight people that have had these real expensive drugs. And those are ongoing. Those are something that do not just stop unless they get off the plan.
Right.
For whatever reason. Those are usually every single year. But no, you could, you could vote to not accept any of these and we just keep the current, current plan design as is.
And then my last question, what's our timeline? Do we have to make a decision tonight?
Uh, yes, ma'am. We, we start the open enrollment process within the next two weeks.
I don't have any more questions, mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion on 6F?
I just want to add one, if I might. These are really important decisions to just be hit with at the last minute. And I know it's taken a lot to try and figure it out and to try and come up with a plan. I, I think in transparency, all of these are costs to the city. And all of these are costs to our employees. And we actually have very, very good benefits for our employees. But I, I want to reiterate one more time that having these last minute huge decisions is just not right. But here I am.
Can I speak to that real quick?
I can address that too.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm gonna jump in and then I'll let you. So, so, and I know what you're probably gonna say, we're gonna hear it twice. But health insurance is a little bit different. There, there's, there was a formal bid process. And so we have to follow certain guidelines on, on timing. The thing with health insurance is, he's not gonna be able to have any of his, his health, health insurance people respond to a bid until we have a minimum of eight months of coverage. Well, our plan year starts in October. So we've got to get through May before we can ever even put the bid out. And so we literally right now are on the, the tightest of tight schedules, getting those bids in and reviewed and then, and then presented to y'all. And so in this case, this will always be this way, unfortunately.
Well, the only, the only objection I have, and first of all, this is, I think you do an outstanding job, Ms. Kerbo.
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, I know you work very hard and I really do plan to bring you dinner.
But I need to eat.
But part of my surprise was I was thinking all along that it really would not be that much of a difference be, but because we came, you know, because we were, you know, being very creative in the plans. But the 350,000 in CARES Act is just our budget. I mean, it's just our budget. So that's a huge increase, plus the rest of the increase. And I hope we get a little heads up, you know, that how much this has increased in our budget. So that's really what I'm, I was surprised.
I, I understand that. And, and like, like you said, you know, until we got the bids in, we did a sealed bid process. And so this year, it was a little bit longer before he actually was able to see what these, these numbers were gonna look like. We had no idea what these numbers were gonna look like until our bid opening is what, June the 28th or something like that? So we've just gotten the bids in and started that negotiation process. So I understand it's, but with health insurance, that's just kind of the way, the nature of the market.
And, and we also, we start the open enrollment process a little, little sooner than most because of the way the employees are paid. And so everything has to be done at a certain time based on the payroll deductions and when they come out. So they need to be finished before the end of August, all of open enrollment because of the way the payroll deduction, payroll deductions are done. So that's another reason as well. That we couldn't put this off and, and wait another month or so to do this.
Anyone else?
I, I just have one comment, Mr. Baer.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
It just, and maybe I'm just so naive on this process that I, I just have never done this before. And we're, like Councilmember Bellinger mentioned, we're getting exactly one option to approve. This is not a choice, we're not making a choice. We're either staying with what we have or we're choosing this new, new plan. That's not really, I, I feel the same way, like we're put under the gun on this decision. Not just because of timing, because, because it's not really a choice.
I'm back. Sorry. So, so to that, you, you do have a choice actually in, in the, in the financial side of this. Because what we're proposing to do with the, with this CARES infusion and the increase in the city's paid premiums will keep the self insurance fund at a fund balance level that is healthy. Now, we can leave the premiums at 660 a month and not transfer that CARES Act. The problem is gonna be, we're transferring 3.1 million still. And our, our maximum is 3.9. So what could happen is we draw down $800,000 on fund balance. And we have 1.5 today. So that drops you down to $700,000. You can do that for one year. And then the next year, if you have another bad year, your self insurance fund is bankrupt. And so the option is fund to the expected, between expected and, and maximum or not. We can, we can change the amount of funding. The option is to use reserves. At the end of the day, do you want to continue to maintain those reserves above the million dollar point that we, that council in past has chosen to kind of be? that we, that council in past has chosen to kind of be our, our, our lowest point before we kind of pay it? Because you saw we had a couple of years that we got really, really, um, low. Had we had another really bad year after two thousand and sixteen, we would have bankrupted the, the insurance fund at that point. And so the option is adopt this with these in, these increases or not and throw, you know, roll the dice that we don't hit that maximum and use up our fund balance. So I know those are not two great options, but those are the options, unfortunately.
Well, actually, I think that's very helpful to me because we're just talking about the general fund. I mean, I, I, I consider the CARES Act just a shell game thing. We're talking about taking our money out of the general fund and shoring up the, when we could actually at later on decide, wait a minute, we need to shore it up. I mean, in six months, we might say we need to transfer three hundred and fifty thousand.
That is always an option, that is always an option.
So I, I, I really do not like the shell game of the, of the CARE, oh, we have this free money because it's just our general fund. So I think I would prefer to not transfer the three hundred and fifty thousand, go with this and see where it gets us and if we need to.
That, that's a, that's a viable option.
But that leaves us to decide if we need three hundred and fifty thousand for something else. I mean, we're actually putting it as number one priority. This doesn't hurt any of the employees, but it just puts it in a realistic perspective with all of our other needs.
Perfect, and, 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 and I, I know he kind of touched on, on the reasoning for the, for the, the amount is we've had a really high claim year, you know, and a portion of that, he actually ran COVID-related claims. And so the thought was to replace the COVID, those, those would not have been there had COVID not happened. We got the money because of COVID and so that was the, that was the reimbursement process. But yes, I mean, we can, we can proceed with the increase in the premium and hold off on that transfer. That, that is an absolute option. You know, understanding that if we do get to the point where we, we continue having these high claims, at that point, it becomes either a necessity to make that transfer or to adjust and, and, and the city's going to have to come up with more money per employee per month.
But then, then we have the same options available to us. Then, you know, we may choose that that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is better spent, you know, with police positions or with, you know, and this doesn't hurt the employees. And then later on, when we see, you know, that may be our top option. But it doesn't have to be.
So, so removing that, we'll be, removing that three fifty, we'll be funding to about three point three. Is that right? About three point three, um, which will be, well, it, we will actually be funding to basically to expected. And so, yeah, so the expected cost will be the three point three seven six. So reducing that three fifty will get us really close. We may be, we may drop under that just a little bit. But that, that, the, the, the danger there, and let me just, just caution you to understand, that means we're going to have three point, um, three available to pay claims. If claims hit maximum, there's three point nine. So that becomes the question, that six hundred thousand dollar difference, do we take it out of reserves or do we at that point transfer that, that CARES money?
But then we have the choice.
Yeah.
All choices now.
Sure.
You look like you have a question.
Yes.
Thank you.
But there isn't, there's nothing to stop us from transferring that money later if we need to.
No, I will, a- actually, what I will present to you in the budget is a transfer item that will be budgeted. We will not make that transfer until such time as you direct us to.
Okay, and so if we maxed out at three point nine, we would still be looking at, even if we put the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the CARES Act in there, we would still be looking at having to pull two fifty. So I, why was the?
That would be out of fund balance. That would just, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be replacing that unless y'all wanted to take more general fund reserves and replenish. But that would just come out of the fund balance in the self-insurance account where we're sitting at one point five million today. That would reduce that fund balance by whatever the, the additional amount is.
Two fifty, if we didn't move the CARES Act. But we're, but later on in the year, I just want to make sure, later on in the year, we would be able to pull the three fifty from general and pull two fifty from reserves if it maxes out.
If that's, if that's your choice, we sure can.
So then can I ask what the rationale is behind moving the three fifty over if we can do it later?
So based on our history, we are going to be really close to that expected cost. This year, we're a little over our expected. In the past, we have been funding between, um, expected and maximum. This past year, we funded at expected. It's, unless we have a wonderful year, history tells us we're going to go over that expected. And so we were trying to fund to what we actually think we're going to spend next year. Because based on our history, three point six sounds like what we probably will do. And so we were trying to fund to that. We don't fund to the maximum, but we know we're always going to be out there and have some piece of liability that we, that our fund balance may, may be hit because we don't fund to the three point nine, the, the whole thing. But we also don't fund to the bare minimum either because we know, based on history, our claims are always more than that minimum amount, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And does the idea of leaving the CARES Act money where it is and moving it later if we need to, does that idea make you, and with your infinite wisdom of, of financial things, um, does that make you nervous?
No, it, no, because at, at the point that we are going to need that, let's hope we're towards the end of the year. Um, if we start out the year with two big five hundred thousand dollar claims, I'm probably going to be here in November saying, we're, we're going to look at it again this year really close. Go ahead.
You got to also remember that we have still July, August, and September claims for this year. So we don't, we don't really know what that's going to look like yet. And so that's also part of the equation as well. So we're not just looking at a twelve-month policy, it's more like fifteen months down the road. So it's this three months versus the next twelve on the policy period as well.
You know, I think we spin into our reserves last year. We, we've got anticipated liability and it's the prudent thing to fund this and, and, and to make sure that we have enough money, that we, we have a healthy, healthy fund balance. And, and again, our professionals are recommending this to us and, and, you know, I just think it, it makes sense to, to keep our fund at a, at a healthy balance.
So, so tonight, actually, y'all are going to actually, uh, adopt that piece in the budget process. And so tonight, what you're doing is approving the plan and that, so if, if y'all choose or, or if we, we want to talk that through during this budget process, we certainly can. The adoption of, of the contract for Blue Cross is one thing. How we are going to fund that is part of the adopt, the budget adoption process. So we can change that as we have more discussions on that. That helps.
Um, a- a- and ju- just in one more last point of clarification, sorry. Um, I, I just, I just wanted to clarify. So basically, this, this plan is, you guys is, you, I know you worked very hard on it. So your response to basically two things, a high claim year and the market forces, right? It's, it's, you're responding to things that we, that are not within our control to change.
Exactly, and so what he's presented is the actual bid per se that, that Blue Cross gave us. And they said, this bid, your expected cost is, you know, three point six, whatever. And so that, that is, that's what we're, we're presenting to you is based on, is just like a, a concrete contract that comes in at five hundred thousand dollars, we're going to present to you what, it's not necessarily our idea, it is what the bid was. This is what we, we expect your claims to be, this is what your, your admin costs are going to be because they're fixed. And so that is, that is what we build the budget from based on the bid received, if that makes sense. So it's kind of like getting a bid for a, you know, a contra, a, a dump truck.
Right.
But a little bit different. So it, it's not within our control to, to change a lot of that. We can do little things that tweak those amounts, but what, what they're giving us as expected and maximum is based on history and things that we can't control.
I just, I want to say too that I, it's clear that you guys put a lot of hard work into this and thank you, I appreciate it. My frustration is not with you, it is with the fact that we live in a world where our healthcare system is profit-based.
And that's another reason why it's partially self-insured because on a partial, on a fully insured basis, your premiums would be in, well, in excess of over four million dollars. It would be on a guaranteed cost basis. So the city would have no chance of, of keeping some of that money. And so that's, that's where the profit comes from more than anything. You look at what the reinsurance loss ratios have been over the last four years and Blue Cross has lost money on the reinsurance piece every year because of how much, you mean, paid a million dollars out in two claims and the, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar stop loss. So they paid out three hundred and seventy-five thousand on each employee, um, this year alone, so two. And so that's the reason partially self-funded is such a good plan and has worked so well because all these fund reserves, there wouldn't be there. Because very rarely do you get, ever get a rate decrease from an insurance company. They may tell you, congratulations, you got a no increase this year, but they never want to go down. And they always want to go up on the fully insured cost. So a year like you had this year, it would be well into the, we, we, we really projec, projected based on what we saw a couple of months ago that the max liability would be four point three, point, four point four million dollars. And so when we, when we got it down to three point nine, three point eight percent rate increase over last year, I thought that was definitely, you talk about the wins, I thought that was definitely a win. And now it's just up to the council if they want to adopt some of these plan design changes. Uh, we talked as, as a committee, also talked to the department heads in, in an open meeting that we had last week with department heads and went over some of these plan design changes to see what their thoughts were as well. Uh, obviously, they're in touch with the employees and these were the four that was agreed upon.
From the department heads?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I just want to make one more comment. Ms. Hall, I really appreciate that I know for a fact that you will be educating employees to help incentivize lower, lower costs with the same healthcare.
The point of the purposes with this is to help the employees become.
If you talk, and only because of the people who are not here.
Is to help the employees become a more educated consumer. And because when you ask, when these, you ask some of these employees whose pharmacy bills are seventeen thousand dollars a month, how much is your, how much is your prescription? They'll tell you a hundred and fifty dollars. They don't realize that the city's paying the difference. And so once we start educating them and, and showing them options for this hundred and fifty dollars or this seventeen thousand dollar prescription for eight people, um, the same with emergency room visits. We had an employee should, say, oh, I have a thirty-five hundred dollar bill, but they went to an emergency room. And just educating them on how, there's a, well, I can't pay that. We, we're going to help you set up a payment plan, but that's, and, and we want to stop those types of things.
And this will be a huge part of our cost.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we're going to, um, we have education, um, sessions set up all throughout the, uh, open enrollment period.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion on F? I'll move, consider, to consider approval of the city's partially self-funded health insurance plans and ancillary benefits between the city and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, MetLife Insurance and Lincoln Financial, an authorized city manager, execute any and all necessary renewal contract documents.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I clarify one thing?
Let me, do I have a second?
There's a, there's a rock, there's an error in there. Uh, Lincoln Financial would not be in, in consideration. It's, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield and MetLife.
Got it.
Sorry about that.
Strike Lincoln Financial would be the only thing to come out, and that is a motion.
I'll second, Mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you, Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Hall. Okay, we'll move to G. Sure, we'll have a short break. All right, we will move forward with item, uh, six G. Hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the city departmental budgets for fiscal twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Carbo.
As we mentioned in the last city council meeting, we're going to start, um, going forward through the rest of the, the, the summer and into, um, September, we're going to schedule a budget item for each of the next coming meetings um, just to talk about some things that, that y'all have brought forward and, and do some discussion. Before we get to some of those points, um, I just wanted to kind of go over the budget timeline once more. Understanding that the property tax assessed values are, um, received as of July the twenty-fifth. And so at this point, we do not have those certified values yet. So, um, the appraisal district will be presenting those to us and that is what we will bring to you and build into the August the second budget, which is the, the next item. That is when you're going to see the draft budget, um, the first time. Um, on August the sixteenth, we will vote on a proposed tax rate. This does not. This does not set the tax rate. This is just a new piece of legislation that the, that the state implemented a couple of years ago as part of the, of the tax rate setting process, um, to, for, for transparency purposes. Um, and so, um, that, what this does, this just gives me direction on where to begin the process with the budget, what, what proposed tax rate we're going to start with. It does not mean we cannot change it.
Hold on, there's, there's some audio.
No, it's fine.
Can you hear us now?
We're good. Um, no, you're good. Um, if they were closer, they could hear me because I'm loud. Um, and so what this does is this gives me direction on, on, um, how we proceed through the process. It does not set the tax rate. Y'all can make any choices that you need to between now and the September thirteenth date, which is the actual date of the ratification of the tax rate. Um, we also noted in the last meeting that the August the ninth was a special meeting that we have canceled. It was a, one of those additional workshops that we had added for y'all last year. We have August the twenty-third and the thirtieth, if needed, because we have an extra couple of weeks between the August the sixteenth and the September sixth meeting. At this time, there is nothing scheduled. But if y'all choose to have additional workshops on the budget, we'll be happy to, to come back and and have any discussions that are needed. Um, but at this time, there's nothing scheduled. September the sixth, we'll have our budget, the public hearing on our budget. We can adopt that night, or we can wait and adopt it with the tax rate on the, on the thirteenth, which is seven days later. That's a new part of the legislation as well. We'll have the tax rate public hearing that night and the ratification of the tax rate. So, once again, um, we've, we've heard this the last couple of times. I'm a broken record, but this, this is the things that we are, are struggling with and things that we are trying to address um, in the upcoming budget. Um, of course, um, an ongoing issue with recruiting employees to address vacancies um, throughout the organization, but specifically in the police department. Um, maintaining competitive pay and the cost of living adjustments to adjust record high inflation. Addressing high claims from the city's self-insurance fund that we just discussed. Address, addressing the astronomical increases in energy, uh, fuel or electricity. Y'all know, we've discussed that multiple times, the impact that is having on our operational budget. Um, and of course, just overall increases, we're, we're not immune from the effects of the, the inflation that, that is, um, that is ca- causing such havoc in the, in the country. So, we are also having to pay higher prices for, for our services and commodities. And then, of course, prioritizing the planning, designing, fulfillment of the city's capital improvement plan that we've been working on with y'all for, for the last number of months. So, at the last, um, council meeting, uh, Councilman Bellinger, you had asked for, um, a comparison of personnel cost um, for several years. You, you wanted the total, but I gave it to you by phone because it was a little bit easier for me to do that. Um, and then as a percentage of that fund's overall operating budget. And so this, I went back to fiscal year eighteen, and this is by fund, and this is all in cost. This is salaries, benefits, everything, um, for each, um, fund. And so you'll see there, down at the bottom, I, you don't see the total budget for those. Um, but I did calculate, and for each of those years, you can see that the general fund budget, about eighty, seventy-nine to eighty percent of the general fund budget is made up of personnel cost. Um, utility, it is around twenty, it was around twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, we're down around nineteen percent of, of the budget. A lot of that is because there are significant operating cost increases that are kind of outweighing the, the salaries now. Where that's, it's very heavy with our electricity cost, of course. It, it does take a significant amount of power to run, um, water and, and sewer plants and, and pump stations and, and the like. Um, sanitation fund runs about, um, twenty-five to thirty percent of, of the actual operating budget of that fund. And then the airport FBO, you can see, is running between thirty and forty. It varies from year to year because that, that operating budget is mostly salaries, I mean, uh, fuel. And so it depends on if we're selling fuel or not, how much that, that adjusts. Um, so I wanted to bring attention to you fiscal year twenty nineteen. Um, that is a rather significant increase over twenty eighteen. And at first, I thought maybe that was, um, we had a, a big year of fire deployments. But I looked it up, and that is actually the year that we had an audit adjustment for the TMRS rebate that we received of two point mil, two point, um, well, all money was right at two million dollars. Um, and that is a result of the combination of the old, uh, hospital, uh, plan when the city was on, um, the hospital was part of the city back early in the fifties and sixties. The TMRS plans were merged and the city received that, and so our auditors had to book that as, as an expense. So, that's why it bumped that year. And then, of course, in fiscal year twenty-one, that bump, it was the year that we implemented the compensation plan. And so you'll see a pretty, bless you, a pretty significant bump that year because that is when we had, we addressed our, our pay plan discrepancies. And that was a little over a million dollar implementation as well. So, on the next slide.
I have a question on that slide. So, um, what would it be if we included, uh, um, how, how many police officers are we short right now? I mean, I forgot how.
Is it eight?
Twelve.
Well, twelve, no.
Twelve at the end of this month.
Twelve, well, that's, is that just officers?
Just off.
Okay.
Just officers, okay. Uh, so right now, we're short ten because we'll have two more, is that right? So, so all I'm, my question is, is, um, this, you know, we may be maintaining the same because we haven't filled police positions. So if we have those positions filled, what would, would that have been an increased budget? I, I just hate balancing our budget on the backs of our police force.
So, so on the, on the, the, the eighteen through twenty-one, the actual years, you're going to see what we actually paid out. So those vacancies, now, the twenty-two is a budget number and those are proposed, and we budget for those vacant positions, okay? And so if they're not filled.
Well, we didn't budget for, for the three.
For three of them, right. And so, though, if the, if the other positions are not filled, there, there is some cost savings, but it's not full cost savings because then you have an increase in overtime because you have to cover. We have to have the coverage, it's just we're doing more with less police officers.
So, does it also cover insurance?
All of that is included.
Health insurance is included and any other benefits?
All benefits, TMRS, yes, all of that is included in these numbers, yes ma'am. Okay?
Appreciate it.
No, you're welcome. So, taking just the proposed year, so that very last column and, and going a little bit deeper. Um, Councilman Huckabee had asked me to go a step further and split our sal, our annual salary and benefits based on managers and non-managers. And so that's what the, that twenty-six million that's proposed is split. And that, you'll see, the managers is four point three and the non-managers is twenty-two point one. Now, we have a very differing rate structure, I mean, a, a, a employee structure throughout the city. And so some departments have one manager and a few employees, and some have a, you know, a director and a manager, superintendent. And so it was very difficult to figure out what exactly we wanted to include. So, we discussed it when, um, when he visited with me. And so what we landed on was we have a management group that we meet once a month. And so those are our, are basically our in-house management decision makers. And so some of them don't have manager in their name, but they are part of that group. And so I took all of those people, and that's who I included as managers. And so that's the split. And so I'm hoping, Mr. Huckabee, that's what you had intended me to do.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome.
Can, can you tell me how many of each, how many managers you're talking about? Non-managers.
I, I probably should have be able to tell you that. I will tell you that when I looked at, so that, that sixteen is, sixteen percent is the value of the total salaries is sixteen percent. The number, and I do not remember, but the number, there's eleven percent of the employees are managers and eighty-nine. So it's, it's pretty close to the same percentages. I did remember the percentage, I did not remember the numbers. Lots of numbers floating in my head. So we did, we did speak earlier about, um, one of the items that I wanted to talk to y'all tonight about, which was um, the self-insurance reimbursement, um, from the COVID claims. Um, again, um, the goal here was to maintain our fund balance and reduce the premium increase that was um, going to, to be affected to the city's operational budget. Because like I had spoke earlier, had we, had we not planned that transfer and we truly wanted to continue to fund to between expected and maximum, that would have been equivalent to a thousand and ten dollars per employee per month. Um, and I just don't think our operational budget can withstand that at this point because you're, you're, you're asking for another three hundred and fifty thousand dollar general fund infusion from operations, um, to cover that. And so that was, that was the impetus for this. We had some good discussion about, um, maybe delaying that transfer until we see how claims go next year. Great idea, and we can definitely do that. Um, what I will do is, is we, when we can discuss this as we get further into the budget process, I can, one, go ahead and budget it so it's there. And if we need it, we just have council action to, to make the transfer, or we can not budget it. And then if we need it, come back and do a budget amendment at that point. So, that is, that is truly y'all's, y'all's call, and we have, and we have several meetings to go before we have to make that decision. And so I just wanted y'all to understand, um, kind of how we want to fund the self-insurance, uh, this year. And we can have multiple discussions about that as we go forward.
Pam.
Yes.
One quick question. Is, uh, there a timeline for using the CARES Act?
N- no, sir. That, that, we always keep saying the CARES money because I want y'all to understand where it came from. But what we did is, is in the very beginning, when the, when the feds decided that they were going to, done issue this money, they gave us some guidelines on what we could spend it on. Well, a lot of it was to do, you know, our own in-house medical and, and things that we would have never spent that money on. And so at some point along the way, they changed their mind and said, okay, we're going to allow y'all to turn in fire and police regular salaries. Um, and we will reimburse you for that because we understand that during that time, their time was spent, you know, they were constantly out there and exposed to, to what all was, was going on with the pandemic. And so what we did is we submitted a spreadsheet that detailed everything that we had spent on fire and police salaries for, for that, um, it's basically that summer of twenty twenty. They reimbursed us that, and then that was the end of the CARES Act. We submitted, we passed audit, and it's done. So that money is truly general fund reserves. We have in our mind that that's where it came from, and, but it, there's no strings as to how we spend that money.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other questions before we go on? Okay. So, the next item that I wanted to talk to you about tonight was an item that was brought up when, um, the Public Works Department presented their, their budget a couple of weeks ago. And, um, I think Mr. Bartlett is here, and he, he'll come on up. I want him to give you a little more background and, and kind of reiterate some of the things that, that he told y'all and, and why we're going down this route. And then I will step back and, and we'll talk some financial figures.
Thank you, Pam. Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. And this is just basically to remind you of our discussion we had at, when we had the rec center and budget. Uh, one of the things that we proposed was some assistance in helping us develop a program. So we have started an in-house program now, where we are training trainers, and we will be developing our own CDL licensing training here. Uh, as part of that maneuver, we would like to encourage both existing employees and then, so we can do retention and upward movement of those employees, as well as attract employees, uh, to us to provide that training and then have some form of stipend for CDL. And this is for two reasons, again, one for retention and one so that we can actually grow our own. Uh, we just can't find them. So we have a lot of applicants, uh, for our jobs that don't necessarily have that, and we need it as a requirement. Some of our departments, like streets, for example, in sanitation, virtually all the employees have to have some form of CDL. Uh, quickly to remind you, there are two basic CDLs here. There's a CDL B, uh, which is your first level of CDL, and then a CDL A, which allows you to haul some larger loads, some of the big boy equipment, uh, as well. There are also some kind of side things like tanker certifications and things that go on with that. So, our request to Pam and, and tomorrow was for consideration to, in the budget to give to you to allow some form of stipend for these employees who obtain this certification or currently have that certification to maintain it. I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Well, uh, Steve, uh, good luck on getting, uh, a lot of applicant. With Brazos Transit District, they're having the same issues. Uh, they've even raised their pay and they still cannot retain, uh, CDL drivers. Mainly because they are getting, a CDL driver can request their own route. You know, they don't have to do what, uh, the routes that the company have sitting on, on the base right now. So it's even for, uh, Brazos Transit District as a whole, they are, it's difficult to even, uh, attract a CDL driver after increasing the pay quite a bit. Just to come in.
No, Councilman Bolden, I, I certainly agree. And I don't know that this is a remedy for everything and a cure-all, but we think it will at least elevate where we are in our ability to both generate those and retain those. So, um, it's, I guess, the most creative idea we had to try to up our game and get the drivers that we need. So, but no, I appreciate your comment. It is a competitive issue.
I like the plan.
Yeah.
It's just that it's going to be difficult.
Absolutely.
Attracting.
You're, you're encouraging me tonight, I know, so. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for y'all? Thank you.
So I neglected to mention that we're going to do this meeting a little bit different because I'm going to be hollering at folks to come up, and we're going to do this, because I want the, the, the folks that actually have the background knowledge of why we're asking for this because it's not all about dollars. It's about the reasoning why and what we're trying to accomplish. And so, um, in a few minutes, I'm going to ask the, the fire chief and the police chief both to come and, and speak to y'all. But, um, on the CDL, what, um, I think we have come to a, um, a proposal, and this, this covers various departments. So, we're talking in the general fund, you've got vehicle maintenance and parks and cemetery. Um, street department and utility, you have utility construction. And sanitation fund, of course, you've got your garbage collection and disposal. And so this reaches a wide range of, of our, um, of employee base. But it also reaches a wide range of our employee base that are on the bottom of the pay scale. And so although we are, um, we are working towards the retention and the attraction, basically, but the retention piece of this is, these are our employees that, um, that we need to do something to try to retain because they can leave and, and make significant mu- more money elsewhere. So we're, we're trying to, to do something to, to incentivize them to stick around and, 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 um, you know, join the good fight and, and keep, keep on keeping on here at the city of Nacogdoches. So, with that being said, what we had, um, proposed, um, for a class A, which he did mention was the, with the higher, um, certification, um, it's a little more difficult to get, is eighteen hundred dollar annual stipend. Um, the class B, which is the entry level, CDL, would be twelve hundred dollars. And then a tanker certification that is required, um, in our utility construction department would be a hundred and twenty dollar add-on. And so, um, when we, when we went through and looked at all of our current employees that have CDLs, plus the employees that were getting ready to put through the employee training that we're about to, to start, then the, the costs break down, and this is the amount of the stipend, plus the retirement, plus the FICA. So it's, it's all in cost, um, is thirty-seven five for general fund, twenty-four seven for utility, and thirty-five, twenty-two fifty for sanitation. These are operational expenses. And so, um, we have not built these into the current budget as is. Um, so this will be when we get later on. Um, I mentioned last week, we were going to have the same spreadsheet we had last year with some tiers and some, and some, um, uh, discussion on which of those pieces we want to try to, to bring to you in a, a, not a, um, bare bones budget, but adding in some, some additional items. So, that is, that is the CDL plan. Um, if you have any other questions before we jump to, um, the next one.
I think we're good to move, move forward.
All right, so next I'm going to ask, um, Chief Weems to join us. And we're going to talk about some issues in public safety, and then I think, um, Chief Kipflinger will, will join him as well.
Thank you, Pam.
This is your assignments.
How are y'all today? I want to talk a little bit about what our goals are, as far as to try to fix the issues at hand, which there are plenty. We have a, uh, we have three goals in mind. Goal one is recruitment. Goal two, retention and development. Goal three is advancement. So with these three goals, I can handle the first two. The third one's coming later. So goal one with recruitment, what we're trying to propose is, uh, to So goal one with recruitment, what we're trying to propose is uh to incentivize people to come to work for us. And that would be with a sign-on bonus for not only the police officers but dispatchers because we're low on both. And so with that proposal, we're looking at a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus for, for officers. Knowing that we're twelve slots down, uh, and then four slots down on dispatchers, we're looking at a thirty-five hundred dollar proposal for a sign-on bonus. And so that would come to a total of fifty-four thousand dollars for the cost of the city just for goal one. And that's for sixteen slots total. And for that uh five thousand dollar sign-on bonus, that would go to a lateral transfer. That would be getting an officer from another agency. And uh, and that's what our goal is. We would love to do that. Or that would also be getting an officer out of one of the academies around here and it's kind of like a reimbursement. Now, if we're sending that officer to the academy, that is, that's not going to be part of the uh sign-on bonus because we're going to pay them a full years, year's salary before we even get to the point to where we can utilize them. So that's not included. And as far as the dispatcher goes, uh, as y'all know, that is a, a very difficult job. So it's very hard to find somebody and retain them after about six weeks of it because they figure out it's not that easy. And so that's, that's our plan on goal one. Uh, also we have the lateral transfers. That's already in, in existence. That's uh where we take uh veteran officer, say five or six years and plug him in at the slot equal to where we are now with a five or six-year officer. So that, that has proven to be a, a good tool to use and we've done it within the past couple of years. We've uh, I think we plugged in about five officers that way and we've retained as many. So to go on to goal number two, retention and development. So what we propose is assignment pay. An assignment pay, just like I discussed the last time at the rec center, is uh, we're going to start paying these officers that have put in their time, volunteered to do these extra duties and, and had a different or a higher level skill set. So uh, we think it's time to reward them for that skill set and for their, their work, hard work that they've done just to get trained to do the extra jobs. For example, SWAT, SWAT has a, there's a guy on SWAT team right now that's been there twenty-one years and volunteered every bit of it. And that's the training, that's the getting called out in the middle of the night, busting in on these uh, on these houses. Uh, so we're looking at, at trying to offer them an assignment pay of three hundred dollars a month. And then we go to the negotiators. Uh, negotiators, we're looking at about a hundred dollars a month extra for them. And the FTO pay, we're also looking at a hundred dollars a month. Now, they have a uh, they have a, a kind of an assignment pay right now, but it's only when they're training. So it's, we just think it's not adequate enough because they're not always training when we're always low. So we need to keep them motivated, keep them in the slot. And, and if they're not getting paid, even though they're not training at that particular time, it still keeps them motivated. And uh, we believe that would incentivize them. CID, uh, that's Criminal Investigation Division. We're going to look at two hundred dollars a month extra for them because of their skill set and because you have to be an officer for at least two years before you can uh apply for CID. Well, that's a, a higher level of training. So that's what we're looking for for CID. And traffic or accident reconstructionist, that is a very intense uh training and it takes a while to get to the level to where you can go out and, and uh reconstruct an accident like a fatality or a serious injury. So we're looking at two hundred dollars a month on that. And then the street crimes unit. With, with the traffic and the street crimes unit being basically depleted right now, we're hoping that the two hundred extra dollars a month will encourage people to uh, once we get close to fully staffed, to uh go out for the, for those two units. So uh, with that being said, I think that's going to run a total just for the assignment pay at around a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars extra. New money, so.
A year, Chief Weems? A year?
A year, yes. And so with that being said, uh, not only does this hopefully retain the people that have put in the hard work in the many years, but it develops the new officers. It encourages them to, to try out for some of these slots. And so if, if we can do that, then the people that are retiring, they will at least be able to train the people that are coming right behind. So, and as far as goal three, I'm going to leave that up to Pam because that's, I don't think that's on the slot for this year, so.
I, I do want to, no, no, stay. You're good. Um, on the sign-on incentives, when I calculated this, I calculated this based on four vacancies in dispatch and eight vacancies in patrol. So this number is not fifty-four. If we have twelve vacancies in the officers, that will be seventy-four. So that's my error because I thought we had eight vacancies and if we have twelve, that will increase that amount. So I did want to, to let y'all know that was my error. Um, go ahead.
Okay. No, I, I'll turn it over to you unless you have any questions for me. The modified step system is basically our, our step system that we have right now, but we're, we're trying to get it uh off the ground, basically with the, the evaluation process. But I'm going to let Pam talk about that.
Sure. Questions?
Yeah, just one. Um, I'm, since, since these are um things we're trying to um recruit and retain, I'm hoping that we can have, you know, a report that we can kind of track it, both for the CDL um drivers and also for all of these incentives. I think it's really helpful to track and see, are they really helping in recruiting and retaining or are they not? I mean, because we had the last one that we thought would help and it actually hurt, you know, so.
Well, it actually helped in a sense, but.
But bring on new people, but not retain.
Right. So with this, with the tracking system, we can track it. What we're going to be tracking right now would be the retention part of it because uh, and I guess we could keep up with the recruiting part because of the five thousand or the thirty-five hundred.
It was a whole lot of extra work, but just, just something that we can keep track, just to see if this is really helpful or if maybe we need to up it or do, you know, how we need to tweak it. So thank you for.
Okay, thank you.
But don't, don't do a whole lot of extra.
Do, do, does this make you competitive, the, the dollars that you're talking about?
It, it goes a long way to make us competitive, but again, we're also doing free things there like changing the culture of the department, getting the reputation back up to where it needs to be as a good place to work. This helps because people can put up with a lot of stuff if they get paid to put up with it. But we also want to present a positive attitude and a, a forward-thinking attitude and this plays right along with it. So it's not necessarily the money, but it's also the culture that we're trying to, to uh revitalize.
Anybody else? Anybody, uh, Mr. Huckabee or Mr. Bolden? No?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So uh, when we sat down to look at the, the three goals, we share the same three goals. As you're aware, we're not having the recruitment challenges uh that the police department's currently having and we're fully staffed. Uh, what we do have though is a challenge recruiting uh advanced emergency medical services professionals. And so as you're aware, um, the vast majority of our emergency calls are medically related in some fashion, uh, be they heart attacks or car wrecks or broken bones. And so we require all of our firefighters to be emergency medical technicians, but we don't require them to be advanced EMTs or paramedics. And so part of the goal number one recruiting is actually our assignment pay program that we're proposing, which would provide assignment pay to those advanced EMTs and paramedics that have higher skills and can provide better life-saving interventions. Um, that would be part of a recruiting tactic because our, our peer competitors out there are doing that and paying for those advanced certifications. It also ties into goal number two, which is retention and development because we believe that internally we'll have a number of firefighters that say, I want to go become an advanced EMT and provide a higher level of service. And this is just one piece of motivation uh to help along that way. Money is not the only motivator by any means, but it certainly uh is an encouraging factor. And so in addition to that, we currently have assignment pay for six fire inspectors. We are not proposing uh to do anything with that assignment pay that we've been paying traditionally. Those are uh fire inspectors that are on shift that in addition to their firefighting duties are expected to go out and answer complaints at businesses or if somebody calls about a hotel smoke alarm not working, uh, they go above and do a little extra. We also have three arson investigators on shift. Arson investigators are firefighters and peace officers. So they're full-time police officers that work for the fire department and they do a firefighter job. But when we have a fire, they conduct that investigation. They're currently receiving a hundred dollars a month and we want to double that uh because of all of the training and requirements and because that, that labor group is actually aging out and we need to make sure that we have younger firefighters coming up that, that want to go to police academy and serve in those roles. Um, and then the final thing is we have a captain on the fire department who is a medic and an operator on the SWAT team. And so we've proposed uh mirroring the police department's incentive pay uh for that, for that fire captain, so.
Any questions for Chief?
I was trying to escape.
Think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so one thing that, that I also didn't preface this entire presentation with is that the majority of these items tonight, I'm not asking for a decision tonight. Um, this, this is part of the budget process and so we're going to continue um getting your input on what you, what you want to see, what you don't want to see. But on the sign-on bonuses, that is something that I think at this point, we are at a critically low level um in the, in the police department and we would love to be able to start this immediately. This is not an operational expense. We propose to take this from um general fund reserves. And so what we would ask is that if you could, to give us direction tonight, one way or the other, if we can start this sign-on bonus program for dispatchers and officers currently. Now, understanding the seventy-four thousand would be if we were able to hire all twelve officers and four dispatchers immediately. Unfortunately, that's just not the case with the way that, that our, our history with hiring has gone. So I'm not asking you for seventy-four hun- no, seventy-four thousand tonight, just understanding if we are able to hire a police officer next week that we would like to, to incentivize them with that five thousand dollars now instead of waiting until October when the budget is, is passed. And so what we would, what we would ask is that y'all say, yes, this is a good program. We want to proceed. If we're able to hire anybody between now and September the thirtieth, whatever that amount might be, if it's three officers, I will have a, a budget amendment at the end of the year for fifteen thousand dollars for that item. So that, that is the only one tonight that, that I truly would like some, some direction tonight on, on whether we want to go that route or not. And we don't have to discuss it right now. We can come back to it later because we've got a lot. Okay?
Yes, this is a good program. I'd like to proceed.
Okay, others?
Oh, sorry. I thought you were waiting for them. Um, you said the money would come out of reserves. What do we have in reserves right now?
Um, we, we, you know, we, we can't ma- have to maintain at least twenty-five percent of our operating budget and reserves, which for the general fund is close to seven million dollars. And this year, we haven't, of course, we haven't finished the year, but I feel like we're going to have anywhere from five to six million over that required reserve. So at this point, we're like fifty percent instead of twenty-five percent. So we do have the reserves there to, to commit seventy-four thousand dollars without it being a huge burden on, on reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bolden?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree with others that this is a good plan, good program. Even starting it before the next fiscal year. So yes, thank you.
Mr. Huckabee?
Agreed on all counts. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much. So we will, we will get that policy in place and I'm, I'm sure uh HR and, and police will work diligently to get that done quickly so that we can, we can offer that up as a um incentive for our, our future advertising, um, for trying to fill some of these positions. So thank y'all. Um, so, so he did, they both went into, to goal one and two, which was the recruitment and the retention and development. And so as we proceed, I'm, I'm on the, the tiered um request, you will see the assignment pay. It is an operating um issue because it is ongoing pay item. So if, this will be an operating item. So that'll be something that we, we have to discuss. It's not currently in the proposed budget and so, but goal three. So where we want to go with advancement, we're not proposing that in this current year budget. We, we want to spend some more time um developing that plan. But what he, what he was speaking to, uh Chief Weems was um in the past, we had had a step plan system. So based on what the, what this actual step plan was, is for each year of service up to ten years, you got an ins- a, a step incentive. It was four, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars per year of service after year two, up to year ten. At year ten, there was no more. So if you were here thirty years, you, you didn't get any more for being here ten years or thirty years. So when we did the compensation plan at the end of twenty twenty and implemented in twenty-one, um, part of that process was to um set up new pay grades and a new way of, of trying to work ourselves through that system. Now, that was in, in the beginning, a merit system. And so um that was the plan, was to have um pay per, pay per, 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 or performance. I'm sorry, that is a tongue twister. Um, and unfortunately, y'all understand, we had three HR directors within a twelve-month period last year. And so that has been a little bit delayed in, in implementation. And so um one thing that, that Chief Weems and I and then um Chief Kiplinger and I ha- have discussed with Mario is the need for us to look at a mechanism to advance these officers. It's great to attract them and it's good to try to retain them, but if we don't offer any level of advancement, they know that. And so there's no incentive to stay long-term. They may, it may, they may stay a couple of extra years with the, with the retention payments that are, that are the assignment pay, but long-term, they know things are not going to, they're not going to progress. And so we have to have a plan for that. Now, that is a very cumbersome process because there's a lot of police officers and a lot of firefighters and they pay, they work a little bit different and they pay a little bit different. And so a- as far as how their mechanisms and, and they, not the amounts, how their, their hours worked. And so it's, it's a very in-depth process that we want to take some time um before we come back to you with a proposal. We will be coming back to you with a proposal at some point in this fiscal year. Now, whether it's for next year's budget or if it's mid-year, if we are having a banner year when, and with revenues are, are increasing, we may come back in the middle of the year and say, now's the time we want to talk to you about an advancement program for public safety. And so uh, in a little bit, we're going to, we're going to, it's going to be listed on your priority tiers. It will be a tier two. And I've got some amounts and we'll talk about that a little bit in, in depth then. But just understand that that's not something that we're asking for this year. We're just wanting y'all to understand that it's, it is a possibility that we're going to work a program and bring it back to you within the next year. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'm wondering how that might impact our retention of tenured police officers immediately. I know we are losing right now two very tenured, uh, I'm, I'm a little nervous about putting that up. I'm not as nervous, I'm sorry, uh, um, Chief Kiplinger, because you, you don't seem to be losing people. But I'm very nervous about the police department um retention. And I, so I'm concerned about putting that off even right now. Is there a threat of losing people? An immediate threat of losing people? I know we've got the, uh, the incentives, but um, I don't.
To answer that question.
Sorry, I, I just want to know. I, it, if we're okay, I mean, we're okay, but if we're not okay.
Councilmember, when Scott answered, going to answer his question, the question, but the other thing too is that doesn't mean that we have to wait until next fiscal year. We just need time working with the two departments to make sure we're fully aligned. And if we need to bring something to you mid-year, we can bring something to you mid-year.
Okay, and I'm, I'm not sure why both departments need to be aligned if one is losing people and the other isn't. I'm, I'm, that's just a kind of a, uh, okay. Mid, mid-year now, are we going to lose anybody because we didn't do something right away?
I can't, I cannot answer the, I cannot, I cannot answer the fact that it's because of this. I can answer that there are uh rumors that we're probably about to lose another one. Not only the one that I've already told you all about, twenty-two-year veteran, but uh, one that's got at least five-plus years. So that's about all I can answer for that. I can't, I can't say why because I don't know.
Would an incentive, would some kind of retention pay keep that officer?
From my knowledge, this person was offered more money uh to the point to where he.
So this would make.
Wouldn't be wise to turn it down. So this might make a difference. So, and maybe if, just speaking off the cuff here, if we would have answered this question maybe six months ago, the twenty-two-year veteran probably wouldn't be leaving. So that's just my two cents.
So that's my hesitation in putting it off if we could retain.
Yeah, but, or, I mean, what, let's, let's talk to them and, and, and come back and, come back. Yeah, but, or, I mean, uh, what, let's, let's talk to him and, and, and come back and, come back and see us and let's, let's try to put a stopgap in place.
Even for this person?
The twenty-two-year one is already committed, uh, this person I can talk to, so. I think what we've talked about in tier one and tier two might help.
At least show him a direction.
Right, because he, uh, he has aspirations for one of those assignments. But as far as what he's being offered, I have no idea what the price, what the dollar amount is. So I don't know if we can get there or not.
Okay, well, don't, just don't close the door.
I'm not gonna, trust me, I'm not closing the door, so.
Okay.
So we can be open to trying to do something even quicker than that, thank you.
So when we get to, to the tiers, all of those are, are our first best guess at, at what is important this year. If that is something that we want to move to tier one, that is, that's what we did last year. We, we, if y'all remember, we kind of shifted around some things. And so, yeah, we can definitely talk and, and um, just, just as a background, a, a little bit to tell you what our first um, run at this is. Because, you know, at the end of the day, we, we literally threw, and I'm not exaggerating, eleven-by-seventeen paper, six pages long, just for the police department. Because what I did is I went out five years. Because it's not just the impact today, it is an ongoing process. So when you implement a, and this is what we're calling a modified step plan, there's, there's a significant cost in day one, because you're slotting those, those tenured officers higher in the pay grade. But then to move them, the advancement piece is all the years thereafter. And so although I have pretty good confidence that our spreadsheet is pretty accurate, it's something that we wanted to spend some more time with, we wanted police and fire around the table to make sure that we were all on the same page and that what we were actually going to propose was going to accomplish what we wanted to. And so the thing is with, with the modified pay system, is moving through our pay grades is a one percent adjustment per step. And so we're not talking about significant monies on an ongoing basis. But it is the plan in place that we, that the officers know that as they perform, they can move through the pay scale. And right now, we don't have that option yet. And so that's, that's the, that's the kind of the, the impetus of that and we'll talk a little bit about the, the uh, amounts in just one second. Because like you said, we can definitely, we can definitely look at moving that into this year if, if you choose. Okay, so another thing that um, has been going uh, around, of course, right now with, with the economy the way it is, we have seen a number of cities and I don't know if you've, have read in the newspaper in the last um, several weeks, the, the school district um, here as well, has, has done some retention payments um, for employees. So a lot of folks are doing the sign-on bonuses, you know, you know, in company-wide. Um, we, we feel like right now that police is where we needed to, to, to entertain that um, sign-on bonus thing. But retention is a citywide, a citywide issue. And so um, in the economy that we're in, we're seeing people, you know, looking for jobs that, that pay more that, than, than we do at this, at this point. And so unfortunately, because of the inflation of, of services and, and items and with electricity and fuel and health insurance premiums, there's not a lot of wiggle room in our operating budget um, to cover a COLA this year. And so right now, COLA is not proposed within the operating budget. Because of course, it is an ongoing cost. Once that COLA is applied, it is, it's there, it's a part of their base pay as we go forward. So what we have, what we have discussed and what we're presenting to you tonight, is a retention for current city staff. And just as a little bit of background, I think Larissa ran this morning, current inflation is around nine percent. And so, you know, of course, that is, that's something that a lot of us, I, I know it was that high when I was young, but I didn't know what inflation was the last time it was like this. And I wish I didn't know now, but um, like I said, we're not proposing a COLA in the operating budget for this next year. So what we are pro- pro- proposing is not necessarily a one-time payment. What, what we did is we took um, and structured our base pay grades, similar to what we did um, a few months ago with the inflation um, payment. And we took our pay grades from, from base to forty-nine-nine-nine-nine. And those employees, there's a hundred and twenty-eight employees that, that fit within that um, category. And then our base pay of fifty to seven-four, seventy-four-nine-nine-nine, that's an additional twenty-five employees. And I'll tell you why it's so small, because that's where most of our police officers are, but we pulled them out. And then above seventy-five, there's twenty-eight. But we also pulled public safety and said, anybody in public safety, regardless of their pay. So if they're a fifty-five, which our, our entry pay for a police officer and a firefighter is fifty-five-one-ninety-nine. Those would normally be in the middle tier. What we're proposing is to move them to the highest tier, which equates to a one-hundo- hundred-dollar per pay period um, payment. So that over a year, we have twenty-six pay periods in a year, so it's twenty-six-hundred dollars. Now, we talked about the possibility of doing a one-time payment, we talked about the possibility of doing a hundred dollars on each paycheck. And what we have, what we have landed on is possibly doing a quarterly payment um, of, of that twenty-six-hundred dollars would be split in, in four and, and paid out over the next fiscal year. Now, this is not an ongoing cost, it's not part of their base um, salary, it does not increase, there is no, there's no operational uh, impact on that. Of course, we do have to pay um, FICA and TMRS on that, and so these costs all include that. But what this does, instead of doing just a three percent COLA across the board for the city, which is an ongoing cost, because it's an operating cost, but three percent for a director and three percent for a laborer are very different numbers. And so what we wanted to do was try to push the biggest portion of the increase to the bottom of our three-tiered pay grades. And so what this accomplishes, at the hundred dollars per pay period level, for the hundred and twenty-eight people that we have that make below fifty thousand, that equates to a five to nine percent um, increase, an adjustment, and we're at nine percent inflation. So we feel like now, now, the people on the very end, the, the pay grade thirteen, which is our bottom pay grade, they're going to see that nine percent, and then as, as you work closer to the fifty thousand, you'll see it, it drops to the five. But we felt like that was, that was a good retention for the, for the areas that, of the folks that, that are lea- leaving because of the fifteen-dollar an hour, the seventeen-dollar an hour jobs. And so that was kind of the, the philosophy on that. And then working up the scale, you'll see that, that mid-range is a two-and-a-half to four percent increase. And then those above seventy-five, it's a one to one-point-seven percent increase. There again, we pulled the public safety out and said, we're having issues there. We want to make sure that we do have some, something else to help retain them. And so we, we pulled them out and we have proposed them at that highest um, tier. And that is ninety-six of our uh, fire and police officers that work, that are paid within that, that band. Um, this would be from reserves, and so this would be a one-time payment. And as far as, you know, an allocation of funds, um, we could pay it quarterly, we can pay it monthly, we can pay it one-time. That's, that's all part of, of the, the decision process. But this is something that we feel like, in lieu of being able to offer a COLA this year, that might be beneficial to our employees and help get us through this nine percent inflation period that we're seeing. And so as we move forward, this will be one of those items that I will be bringing to you as part of our reserves um, budget. Just like the, the normal capital equipment in the general fund, this will be another one of those items. Um, we have marked this as a tier one, we think this is extremely important for, for our employees. Um, but at the, at the end of the day, it will be part of, of all of the items that we're going to be presenting to you, uh, capital equipment and, and, and the like. So um, we just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what, what we're working towards and see if we're um, even in the, the realm of what y'all might want to consider for, for a retention payment. So at this point, I don't need this decision, but I do need to know if I'm on the right track. Um, if this is something that you're interested in at these levels, or higher levels, or lower levels, um, so that I can, I can start running those numbers. So that would be my ask tonight.
Is this something that you developed with Ms. Hall? Where'd she go?
She's upstairs.
Oh, yeah, we, we've got everybody. We, this has been, this has been very much a group effort. Um, this, this is something that um, another one of those eleven-by-seventeen sheets, and it, it takes a lot of time. So yeah, this is, this is something that we, we've all been trying to, to figure out a way to address. And uh, of course, her input is extremely important, because she's the first, first contact with, with the majority of our employees that come to her and say, you know, I, I would like to stay, but I just, they're offering seventeen dollars an hour. And so part of that process with her is, is explaining also that, well, you may be making fifteen here, but do they offer the benefits, do they offer the ti- and so when we give them an adjusted hourly rate, then they understand, come on down. Then they understand that sometimes the grass is not always greener, because sometimes they see that, that the, the hourly rate, it's not a comparable thing. And so that's part of, of her, oh, you can come on up.
Oh, okay.
Part of her um, part of her education piece that I think um, that we're wanting to pursue. No, you're good. Um, so we were, we were just talking about the retention payments and how we've kind of developed that and, and the need for that and, and uh, so I think she may have some questions.
Yeah, I was just asking if, um, if this was something that Ms. Kerbo developed with you and your, and your thoughts on, on this recommendation?
Yes, um, recruitment and retention has been a struggle. Um, not just with our city, but employers across the state and nation. Um, I was reading things this afternoon and, and people are, you know, you, they talk about the big, the big quit or uh, the great resignation and people are going from one job to another. Unemployment is less than five percent, here it's three-point-something. And so when you get below five percent, generally, it's zero. Because those few people who are not working are not likely to work, if that makes any sense. So we're having to recruit from other organizations. So we're having to compete with what they already have. It's not like they're going from nothing to what we're providing.
Right.
They're going from what they currently are bringing in, you know, whether it's benefits, income, you know, all of the nice little perks that both public and private have, to what we're going to offer them. So yes, we're not only recruiting, but we're having to retain folks. Because I'll, I'll use like um, inspectors or seasoned police officers, they can go almost anywhere. And the, um, I go, you could go on tml.org and look at what's out there, five-thousand-dollar lateral payments just to come aboard. Even front, front, frontline folks like laborers are getting two-thousand dollars. So it's extremely tough right now to recruit.
Yeah, uh, but my No, no. Um, given that um, explanation, and then I think you mentioned that other cities across the state surrounding are doing, are doing this already.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I know, I know that we're focusing on, on public safety and police in particular, because we have to put out that fire and we're at a critical low point with them, I get that. Um, but we also heard from a- across our departments in the budget presentations, that everybody is, is facing similar concerns. And even though these, these, these employees aren't um, involved in the public safety realm, they do perform critical jobs and services for um, for our residents. And so m- my thought on this is that, I mean, I think that this is a good direction.
And we're looking at other, all of the employees, we're looking at the CDL drivers, we're looking at uh, very um, the positions that are very marketable right now, like um, uh, building officials and inspections, and it's just everything.
Thank you.
May, uh, may I just speak, I mean, speaking of something I would consider local, and that's dead car, we are at the same point uh, as issues with retention as, as the city of Nacogdoche do. There is quite a few employees with dead car that have worked and gained experience and became expertise in a certain field. Now are going out into the private industry. And one of the problems they have in, with the private industry is the businesses are not adding additional employees by gathering these employees. They are just filling the locations and the employees duties that didn't come back to work after COVID. So there is a real big issue of retaining employees, I, I'm probably going to guess worldwide. And this plan is, I believe it would be helpful, uh, I would love to see it in place, thank you.
Mr. Huckabee, any comments?
Uh, just to say that I, I know we're not building in a cost of living adjustment, because we, I'm, I'm assuming in Ms. Kerbo, you can, you can fill the gap here, in my understanding, that's because we won't have revenues to cover such a cost of living increase, because it would be an ongoing expense. Uh, I would, I, I think this is a good starting point, but I, I would like to see more information about how we're, how we're distributing it and what the ideas are for uh, like you said, whether it's paid quarterly or uh, with each pay period or whatever that may be. Be interested to hear more.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I am.
Yes.
Uh, see, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good, go ahead.
Um, one of the things that if you look at as far as uh, the plan here and how it's paid out, uh, most especially the private industry, because it's on a monthly basis. Because they still lose, if they pay it quarterly, there will be some employees take it two quarters and then still leave. And still, you, you, uh, you, if you pay it on a monthly basis, usually, and especially in the private industry, you keep that employee much longer.
So, so our thought process here, and, and, and it may not resonate with the employees, but our thought process here was making them understand that this truly is a one-time infusion, it's not part of an ongoing thing, it's not a COLA. And so by paying a hundred dollars every pay period over the next twenty-six pay periods, that it becomes normal. And so at the end of September the thirtieth of next year, they get that first payment in, in October and that hundred dollars is not there. And it becomes very much part of their budgeting process. And so we felt like that might make a burden on some of our employees that, that see that hundred dollars and expect that hundred dollars to be part of an ongoing process. Now, it is an education piece for us, but I still think at the end of the day, if you're used to for twenty-six pay periods getting five hundred dollars and then you get four hundred dollars, it does, it does make an, and, and, you know, I don't know that we, it would cause some issues, morale issues, whatever. And so that's why we kind of backed off on the every single uh, pay per, plan, and then went maybe to quarterly. And so it's all a discussion item and we can do whatever, that was our thought process. And, and Anita brought that up and I thought that was a really good, good point, is they get, they get used to having that, that on that paycheck and then it disappears in October and then, and then we have an issue, yeah. But we can definitely look at, at doing it multiple ways.
I, I think you should do some research, because
Sure.
it is known that uh, you, you lose employees when you go on quarterly.
Okay, well, we can definitely look, you know, we can do some reaching out to, to our managers and, and do some polling of, of some employees and, and just see what, what, how it's happened at other cities and, and, and the, the results of that and, and get back to you on that for sure.
So I need a lot more information.
Let's go.
Because I think, well, you may not have it right now, I think we need, will probably need to be collected. Because I, as I understand it, the goal is not just retention, but recruitment. So um, I would need information about which areas I would want it targeted, to which areas we really need people and which areas we, we seem to be fine, and which areas we're losing people in retention, and which areas seem to be fine. Because rather than an across-the-board, I would rather see maybe a salary adjustment and our, our higher pay, if we needed to have higher pay to compete. Uh, uh, right now, we're paying everybody, and so we're losing the impact for people who are already perfectly happy and wherever they are um, that we could have with the same dollars for areas where we actually need it. So I would rather target it uh, to where we need to both recruit and retain.
So we can do a piece
Than any across the board.
So we can do it, we can do a piece of that, the, the, the problem with that, that first part of that is that making it part of their salary is an ongoing operating co- cost. And so that, that moves it from reserves into an operating issue where we don't have the revenues to cover that, so we can take that piece.
And on, this is an operate, I mean, this is what we have to do to have those employees, and again, this is a kind of a
Sure, sure, and so that becomes a piece of, of how to fund those new personnel costs, yes, yes.
Because it is not, I mean, our reserves are for reserves, this, that's, it's not magic dollars. If we have to have dollars to recruit and retain these people, we have to have the dollars and it has to be proposed that way. Something to me, so, thank you. I, 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 uh, the, I worry a little bit in the, well, never I I I uh, the, I worry a little bit in the, well, nevermind. I already said what I need to say. Thanks.
Okay, yeah, you good?
Yeah, but let me, I don't know where, there it is. Okay, let's see what's next. Okay, so um, during the um, department presentations over the last couple of council meetings, various departments have requested some new positions that are not currently um, in the base operating budget that uh, we will be presenting to you. So these again are new new revenue dollars that are needed to to cover the cost of these positions. And so here are the positions listed and this is our first shot at tiering them. Um, thank you. It's getting hot in here. So um, if you'll remember, we we discussed a little bit about um, Jan requested an office assistant for the third floor. This is um, secretary, city secretary and finance. We unfortunately right now are the only floor that does not have some type of clerical um, assistance and so we don't have a central point for people to come into the third floor or for um, I think a lot of her issue is is the entire phone system comes into the city manager's office. People pick up the, well, I guess they pick up the phone book. Nobody knows what a phone book anymore is, but they get on Google and it goes to city Nakadota's and she gets those calls. And so um, this is some relief in there so that she can actually perform city secretary duties that we are paying her for. And so we do need to to look at some type of clerical um, assistance on the, on the, the third floor. Finance is another situation. We don't have a clerical staff. Um, and so we have a lot of of documents, as you can imagine, we we produce a lot of paper and so a a lot of those documents as we're working through, we have to retain for for records, retention purposes and we have just piles of things to be scanned. It's not a good use of your dollars to pay me to scan items when we can, we can fill that with an office assistant. So that was our thought process there. Um, there was a request for a hor- full-time hort- not even gonna, horticulturalist um, from the parks department. Um, that one's another tongue twister. And a, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about what we're proposing there. It's a little bit different than what they presented to you. Um, and then the same thing with an adoption coordinator at the animal shelter. We have tiered them one, but what we're proposing is to um, take the city gardener that is a part-time position and instead of moving into a full-time horticulturist nail, transition that to a full-time gardener position. So it's the same same position, same person, just going full-time, which will help alleviate the need for the parks crew to come and pull off of parks to do all of the downtown watering because that's right now is is from what I understand from Mr. Bray is is what is kind of our issue is because there's more work than a part-time um, city gardener can do. And so we will still have that hor- horticulturalist um, in, you know, as as a future um, progression. But we wanted to start, we're 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 gonna propose to start with making that gardener full-time and then hopefully in the future we're able to transition into um, a horticulturalist position. Um, on the adoption coordinator, um, they had requested a full-time position there. There again is one of those things that um, it's it's all, it's all money driven and so we're we're being cognizant of the fact that we are requesting a a significant increase in operations. And so what we have um, offered there is to start with a part-time uh, adoption coordinator um, and work hopefully towards a full-time position in the future. And so those two, once we get to the numbers, you'll see that we we are going to to propose a little bit different than than the departments presented to you. Um, and then to tier two, we have the the remaining items um, that were requested from various departments. The evidence supervisor in police, the systems tech in I T, the part-time custodian in building maintenance, the billing, billing analyst in utility billing and a laborer in landfill. And although we all agree that these are needed in every area, unfortunately, it's it's just a matter of being able to fund everything in one year. And I think I told you all last last week, we have a lot of requests and they can't all be funded in one year. Even if you wanted to, you couldn't, you couldn't generate the the tax revenue to cover all of this. Um, because we are limited on what we can, we can um, uh, retain it through an increase. And so um, these. Well. I don't know. Um, so, so although we do, we do realize that these are 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 needs for several of these departments, we have um, asked and we've discussed with most of these departments the idea that we are going to to revisit these next year and and hopefully next year. One of the things that I was gonna mention earlier and I think when Mr. Bolden was was talking and and it escaped me is that, you know, this year was was, I was really excited when sales tax started doing really well at the beginning of the year because I knew that what that meant for ongoing. And so at that point, um, it was, I think next year's budget's not gonna be so bad and you know, it's always one of the, always a a curve ball that gets thrown. Because had we not had the fuel increases and had we not had the electricity increases. And of course, they has, the insurance, there would have been money within the operating budget to pro- propose a COLA, to do some of these things in the existing budget. And so unfortunately this year, you know, the economy just blew up on us. The 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 fuel and electricity um, really have have put a pinch on on next year's budget. And so some of those dollars that we could have come to you and said, hey, these are some things that we could fund. We want to propose a COLA, those types of things. Unfortunately, this year those monies are being allocated to to address fuel and electricity. We are hopeful that that is not a long-term issue. And so hopefully we regain some of those those um, operating um, dollars in the future to go back and actually implement some of these, these things, including the modified step for for public safety and those types of things that we want to address, which is why we'll bring that to you mid-year as we go through. If, you know, for some reason fuel just bottoms out and we're all paying two dollars a gallon and we're happy again, then we'll come back to you because we're gonna have significant dollars available in the operating budget to discuss how we want to to proceed with that. And so I did, I I forgot that earlier, so I did want to mention that. Um, so um, I ju- I jumped down to to explain the tiers and I didn't get to to the full cost. And so um, the retention payment itself um, for each of the employees is six hundred and seventy-two thousand. There is of course, social security, Medicare and T M R S has to be paid on that. So the all-in cost there is eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. And so um, as we're going through this process, like I said, um, I just, I kind of need some direction on if this is, if this is the way we want to do it, if this is the amounts we want, if we want to try to do more, if we want to try to do less. Um, so that I can bring you um, as we go through the budget process, some some tighter numbers. So um, don't necessarily have to have that tonight, but as we work through the budget process, I'm going to plug this in and then we'll talk about whether we want to pull it out or not or change the numbers as we go through the budget process. So you will see this again on the, on the August second budget because it's a, it's not an operating, uh, you'll have all your capital items there to to pick and choose from um, on August the second. So um, I just wanted to kind of get a feel for if we're on the, on the right track. Any other questions? Okay. So let's go back to new positions. Um, so we did talk to to, like I said, most of these departments and and, you know, our department's heads are are, you know, I know they get tired of hearing me say the same old thing. We don't you know, there's, there's no money in in the budget for for new positions. But unfortunately this year, like I said, um, we are having to allocate money to to fuel and and electricity. And so um, they've all been very understanding that every department has their needs and 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 would function much better if we were able to do some of these um, positions now. Unfortunately, it's just, it's just not possible. So um, this one is gonna be extremely difficult to see and I'm sorry, everyone in the audience. I tried to make it as big as a- absolutely possible. It's just a lot of information. Um, so this is similar to what you saw last year. Um, we have tiered all of these um, requests for new programs, new employees. Um, so we we isolated public safety because we did have some a a number of things that were directed directly to them. And so we we needed some direction on that. First of all, being that incentive payment and and thank y'all for giving us some direction on that. And I will update that that is not to exceed seventy-four at this point because it's not fifty-four. Um, and then of course you'll see the assignment pay for for fire and police is a tier one, is a a recurring annual cost out of operations. Now here, you'll see tier two. And so this is the modified step system that I was speaking to earlier. And these are our first runs at what year one would cost us if we were to to implement our our first idea. And so what we did is we took a couple of cities and said, what are police officers? How do they work through their pay grades there? And so we kind of, we kind of flipped the script on it because um, they tend to um, move through the pay scales in the beginning and then every, they kind of do it alternating years towards the end. And so part of what we were trying to do is to move towards a retention for not necessarily our first two or three because we were hopeful that the the sign-on bonus would help with the new folks. What we wanted to do was our tenured employees, what can we do to make sure that they understand that we're trying to keep them in that advancement through their career? And so what we did is the first several years, we're doing an every other year, every third year adjustment. And then at some point in time, we've, we've hammered out a couple. This one's based on it tier ten. We go to an every year um, adjustment on on the pay scale based on, of course, you know, they've got to be performing. If they're in a performance m- plan, they won't be eligible for that, for that tier increase that year. But that gets us to where we can move our officers through our pay plan as it exists. And so that's our year one numbers. Now, year two is not near as scary. Um, year one is a hundred and thirty-five thousand all-in for police and a hundred and thirty-two thousand all-in for fire. Understanding that we did this calculation in a matter of a few days. Um, that's why we want some more time to to make sure that we're, we're thinking through this and actually um, proposing hard numbers. But year two is not near as as significant. It's about a thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars and every ongoing year thereafter. The reason year one is is so significant is because currently, you, let's just say you have a twenty-five-year police officer. And when we went to this new pay system, we kind of tiered police officers and firefighters. They didn't go in based on twenty years of service or, I don't know if I said twenty-five, twenty years of service, let's pretend. And what we did is we put them on like step seven. So we kind of staggered. So if you'd have been here two or three years, you went to step one. If you had been here four, five or six years, you went to step three. If you'd been here eight or nine years, you went. And so we kind of staggered them. So that we did, what we didn't want is a police officer that had started yesterday and a police officer that had been here twenty-five years making the exact same amount of money. So we did start that process. And so what this does is gonna take that year, twenty-year veteran who is slotted in step seven and go into this pay system based on where he would have been had this pace, this modified step been in place this entire time. So that may take him to step twelve or or whatever. And so there is a a, a bump between that first year to get them onto the plan. And then thereafter it would be a one percent um, increase as the steps go forward. So that's why year one is a little bit more expensive. I did not plan to go into a whole lot of detail, but then when you decided that you wanted us to talk a little bit more about how this might be necessary now, um, I did want you to understand kind of how that process works. And so although it is, it is a uh, an expensive um, thing, I think it it's it is ongoing, but there, the additional amount each year will be about thirty to thirty-five based on the the design of the plan now. That is another thing that that we want to discuss is, is the, what we've designed, what is it going to best suit our our employees? And so like I said, we just took another cities and said, what do they do and tried to to make it fit for us. But we do need some time to make sure that what we're presenting is actually gonna be something that is beneficial to the employees and they, they appreciate the ability to advance. And so um, this is preliminary numbers. Um, we can go deeper if if you choose to to address that now instead of waiting. Um, we can definitely start, start that process.
So I do have a comment. Um, you have a million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand that would be coming out of our savings.
Mm-hmm.
Just plain old out of savings that could be for roads or anything else. And they're actually personnel costs. Their cost for salaries, bonuses, healthcare, whatever, their personnel.
Mm-hmm.
They need, I believe they need to come out of our personnel. They need to be added on because that's exactly what they are. They're personnel costs. And um, and we can decide whether we want to tap into our reserves or actually we're talking, basically we're talking about borrowing money for for them because we're talking about borrowing money for, that we could be using reserves for. So um, so anyway, tho- these are personnel costs. I think they need to be, come out of uh, personnel and then we need to target where we need to spend the money. So that's my two cents.
Okay, um, and we, and those all can be shifted to to personnel, understanding that there is, well, there is a way. But we would, it would take an election to raise the property tax rate enough to cover a million too.
Looking, taking a hard look at our budget and seeing what, you know, what items there might be that we could.
Understanding that eighty percent of the general fund budget is personnel. Where we find that is in other personnel cost unfortunately. So that, that is definitely something we can do. Um, but it is, it's gonna be a trade-off at that point because there, there are going to be programs or personnel that has to be reduced in order to fund two mi- a million two uh, in operating unfortunately.
The only exception I would make is the sign-on incentives for the police. I, I mean, I I don't mind. That's fifty-four thousand dollars. So.
Seventy-four, remember I made a mistake?
Right. Seven, or seventy-four if you have all the, all the positions.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Other thoughts?
Okay, so w- let's jump down. We we've, we talked a little bit about the retention payment. We've talked about the COVID um, payment. The C C D L of course is is something that we've, we've discussed. It's not built into the, to the budget as it stands today. And neither do any of the um, the employee um, additions that we talked about here. I've I've notated that the city gardener, um, which would be the horticulturist. Um, it's at a, at a reduced rate because we're looking at just um, taking the existing position and taking it full-time plus benefits. So that's about twenty-nine thousand um, compared to I think the forty-five or so that was requested. And then the part-time adoption coordinator uh, would be about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and so that's all general fund related um, items. So um, just as a notation, and I think we we talked about this, this last year, and this is all dependent on um, property values and when they, and what they actually end up being when we get that from the appraisal districts at the end of the month. But a one cent property tax increase generates approximately two hundred thousand dollars. And so keep that in mind when we're looking at what you want to move to operations. That's, that's how we can generate new revenue. Um, it's at that, that rate. And so the more items that we we transfer to operations, the the more of an increase on the tax side it's going to take unless we are at the point that, like you said, that we want to start looking at, at some reductions in current um, co- current operations. Um, in utility fund, same thing, C D L, um, their portion of that, the utility billing analyst, um, we have, we have placed that at a tier two. Um, I think at this point, um, I would feel more comfortable waiting until we had the um, utility rate study completed before I I present that as a a absolute tier one need. So I would like to readdress that next year. And then in sanitation fund, of course, their, their portion of the C D L certification. And then they had requested a new laborer at the landfill as well. Um, I think currently they have been trying to do um, some contract labor with that. Um, that one will be something as we move through the budget process. Of course, it's not tied to the general fund. So as I work through the revenues, that may be something that moves to tier one if there's monies available. So between now and August the second, I will have a better understanding of if we can, we can propose to, to fund that um, under the current rate structure in sanitation fund or not. So we may, we may be revisiting that one as well. And I think that's all on the budget side for tonight. I think it's enough, huh?
Kind of glazed over.
Yep.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move to H. Hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the consideration of a property tax ceiling and our property tax exemptions for homeowners age sixty-five and older and for disabled persons. Finance director and interim chief appraiser, Jason Malott.
Just hand it over. I'm, I'm gonna let Jason uh, steal the show for a little bit and then I'll be back to answer any questions and and help him out as we go.
Mayor, Council. He'd ask to come back with some examples. So we put together um, slide show. The first slide is a lot of what was said previously. Um, we know who it applies to. What it does, what the qualifications are. And then again, reiterate, the tax ceiling is a ceiling, not a phrase. It's an upper limit. If y'all lower a tax rate, they can see the benefit of that for that year, but the ceiling stays where it is and they can always come back up to that again. It only applies to a homestead, not for other. It only applies to a homestead, not their other properties. That's the homestead rule. They have your calendar on here to set the tax rate on September thirteenth. Tax bills will go out sometime in October. This is enacted by resolution, um, and once you enact a tax ceiling, you cannot take it away. Therefore. On the next slide, this is a five-year history of, I'll say five and a half here because the preliminaries are on there now, but the value of the homesteads of the over sixty-five and the numbers of them. Next to that, we have the disabled persons homestead exemption, the value of their properties, total value of their properties, and how many of those. What this shows over time, how the numbers kind of fluctuate just a little bit. I had talked about a shifting of the burden previously. Well, under a tax ceiling, that's a very, very slow gradual thing. The first year you do a tax ceiling, okay, that sets their ceiling where it is. It doesn't change the tax rate across the board. Um, it is very minute. There is a small one and it's on the next slide here. That when values are flat, that's five one-hundredths of a penny. And when values are rising like they are in the market, these uh extreme sales prices on houses, we're seeing that that number is only three-hundredths of a penny. That's what the tax rate changes by doing a ceiling. As people keep their ceilings longer and longer, um, they see the benefit of the ceiling and it'll be a slow gradual uh shift of the other taxpayers picking up that burden, almost unnoticed as you can see here. Do y'all have any questions about this? I feel like a lot of it's what we've covered before, so I kind of rushed through it. So next up, that was option A. This is kind of option B and C. We don't call it that, but they're totally separate line items. And increasing a dollar amount from a twenty-thousand homestead exemption to a forty-thousand homestead exemption, it can be done for either the sixty-five and older or the disabled persons, or you could do it for both. Currently, it's twenty-thousand-dollar exemption for the sixty-five and older, and it's the same amount for a disabled person. You can increase it now. You also have the option at any time to decrease it. Currently, it's twenty thousand. Y'all could decrease that if you wanted to now. That one, it's council's decision to go up and down from year to year. Um, it's a tough thing to do, but it can be done. This one changes the tax rate quite a bit. This is a one time, you do it this year, it changes the tax rate a good amount this year um to to go in and do it. Based on past history, we looked at the twenty and twenty-one comparison and the nineteen and twenty comparison, looking at about a penny and a half increase across the board to everybody. So there are some examples coming up in here of what that looks like when it goes to everybody. But it's about a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar impact by giving, previously showed you the number of people that would qualify as over sixty-five or disabled persons times twenty thousand dollars. We're looking at about a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar impact. You have to apply the city tax rate to that to get this number. But that's the amount of savings that would be generated to those people that qualify and would have to be picked up by the other folks, all of the other folks, businesses, everybody. Here are the examples. So the, a person who's over sixty-five or disabled, we picked a house with a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar value. Market value one sixty. That is what the average home is in Nacogdoches, in the city of Nacogdoches. And maybe a house possibly down in Arbrokes or somewhere, a house of that style. That's our average here. The homestead exemption currently is thirty-two thousand dollars. It's twenty percent off for any homestead, general homesteads. All homesteads get twenty percent off. Currently, the either sixty-five or disabled person, whichever you might be, is twenty thousand dollars. That's the no new revenue rate from last year, the fifty-nine-three-seventy-eight divided by a hundred. So the taxes on that house were six-hundred-and-forty-one dollars for the city portion. The bottom of that page is working through the same thing. The only thing that was changed was the exemption amount for the over sixty-five or disabled going to forty thousand. Changed the tax rate about a penny and a half there. So they got both a bigger exemption but a higher tax rate. It was five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. So they saved a hundred and five dollars by getting this. The next one is how does it affect somebody with a general homestead by doing this? So the top part of the slide is working through the same thing as before, twenty percent off, no over sixty-five. It's a general homestead. Last year's N and R rate, their taxes were seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars to the city. At the bottom, by giving an extra twenty thousand to the over sixty-five or disabled, increase the tax rate, and this is what the other people might end up paying for that hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar house. Increase nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Y'all following me? The next slide is a much more expensive house, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house. Same exact exercise, get to the bottom of the page. Now, they only saved eighty-two dollars. That's with an over sixty-five or disabled. That's what their savings ended up being with this. To go back, the person with a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar house is saving a hundred and five. So they're saving a little more money with this option. The lesser the house, the more the savings. And next slide is the general homestead of that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house that I just showed. Um, and what their increase is to cover this difference with the increase in tax rate. Their taxes go up forty-two dollars. What's interesting, if there's taxes go up forty-two dollars on the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, and to go back, the over sixty-five person with three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house saved double. They save eighty dollars where the person with the general pays in forty dollars. That is just the way the math works with a one and a half cent tax increase. Here's how it would affect a business. Um, this is locally-owned small business. This is their uh real estate. It's their business building and land that they operate their business on, not all their personal property and all those other things. This is a real one that we picked out of the air. Last year, they paid taxes to the tune of thirty-nine-hundred dollars. With the increase in the tax rate, that penny and a half, that's a hundred-dollar increase to this small business. This is a large business, a six-point-three-million-dollar business. This is one of our local businesses. This is what their land and building is appraised at by the appraisal district. The tax they paid on their land and building last year is their thirty-seven thousand. Increase in the tax rate, their tax due would be thirty-eight thousand. So their increase adds up to nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars with a penny and a half increase. It doesn't matter if you give more exemption to increase the tax rate a penny and a half or you up the budget to increase it a penny and a half. These are real-world things. This is how this works. It impacts everybody. And then this is one of our top taxpayers in the county. They have a thirty-nine-million-dollar property. And skip to the bottom of the slide, by increasing a penny and a half, their tax burden increase for the year would be fifty-nine-hundred dollars. These tax increases are every year after this, as long as that twenty-thousand-dollar exemption's on the table. There will be some changes as values change and percentages, but overall, wh- when you increase taxes in this way by giving an exemption, it is ongoing. It doesn't go away unless you repeal some of those. Any questions on that? Those are my examples.
These are all examples of raising the homestead exemption from twenty thousand to forty thousand, correct?
Correct. None of this has to do with the ceiling. That was the first part.
And then um I saw that you provided calculations for the average home value in the higher end, but I didn't see a lower end example. Um, and so if if the average was nineteen dollars and the higher end was forty-two, what would you guess a lower-income house?
Well.
The increase to that, to that household.
On a.
If y'all want to come back to that, I can calculate it. You tell me an estimate of a home value. I I can.
Pick a number on the air.
No.
Sixty-thousand-dollar house?
I would like to hear from you what a low-income, I mean, what what that value is assessed at.
I mean, there are, we have some houses that may be worth twenty thousand dollars and people are living in. Their names.
Sort of low-income tier, what what would be a middle-of-the-road low-income?
Say fifty thousand. All right. Here's a comparison of the city of Nacogdoches, the top, to the city of Lufkin. Currently, the city of NAC does twenty percent uh homestead for everybody, for the general. City of Lufkin doesn't do it. Um, currently, NAC does twenty thousand dollars for the over sixty-five, twenty thousand for uh at the city of Lufkin. And city of NAC, disabled person, they're given an exemption. Lufkin doesn't do it. There's also the ceiling thing. Over the city of Lufkin's already given the ceiling where the city of NAC doesn't. They both give the free port. Um, you can see a little difference in the tax rate on the left side of the page there. And the reason, part of that reason's at the bottom, that they have a sales tax dedicated to property tax relief. This sheet goes on to compare county and schools in what they're offering. All right, based on part of tax year history. I talked about a penny and a half. Here are some more specific numbers. In twenty-twenty, when um we didn't have huge value increases at the appraisal district, it went up one-point-six of a penny. And when values rose last year, a slight rise, I'm talking about last year and twenty-twenty-one, um, it was that penny and a half. We can't guess what twenty-twenty-two is going to be yet. It's too early. We still have too many properties under protest and too much else going on that in July, to be able to give you those numbers, accurate numbers, to calculate the tax rates. So.
Well, I'm I'm having to pick up another number.
So. There's a resolution required to either enact the tax ceiling or enact additional exemption or both. And you want the additional exemption for the sixty-five or the disabled. Y'all have a lot of decisions to make.
So I I use the fifty thousand, but under that scenario, and I'll have to ask you this. That those, the homestead plus the forty thousand increase takes that value to zero, so is there no tax?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so under that scenario, under the current twenty-thousand-dollar exemption with their twenty percent.
On the over sixty-five.
Right, 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 on the over sixty-five.
The question may have been on the general.
Well, we were on, we were going to compare.
Okay.
Okay, so on on the over, over sixty-five, that would take the value of the fifty-thousand-dollar house with the current exemption of twenty thousand dollars, their tax is a hundred-and-eighteen dollars a year. Increasing that to forty takes their tax to zero because they have the fifty-thousand-dollar worth of exemptions. And then when you take that to the, um, that's where I was in my calculations, when you take that to the general homestead, so you're looking at thirty thousand times the new rate of point six oh eight eight seven, it's a hundred-and-eighty-two. Oh, no, I'm sorry, forty thousand times point five one three seven eight. Three, so that's a six-dollar, that's a six-dollar increase on the taxes for the the fifty-thousand general homestead, where the one that's over, it goes from a hundred-and-eighteen to zero. Okay, so they're going to save a hundred-and-eighteen, that a hundred-and-eighteen dollars because they're actually going to have zero tax bill this year. And then that shifts to, and then we could go through all of, because it shifts to everybody. So we could go through the the business and stuff too, but that that's, that's the 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 impact on a fifty-thousand-dollar under sixty-five. Sorry, too many numbers in my head.
It's a six-dollar difference.
Very specific examples we came back with, across the board, all types of property.
I guess I think we'd have public comment now.
Sure.
Anybody want to come in? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you again for having us on the agenda. It was a little later than we had expected to be, but most of us seniors are getting ready for bed by now. But that's okay. We're very, 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 very grateful to um our appraisal district, uh Jason, and to any others that worked on this. They've worked very hard. I will tell you that I've worked very hard on it for about two years. They'll tell you. Uh, probably for the last ten years, I've been coming into their office and asking them, what can we do? What can we do? How can we do this? And this is, seems to be the best way to do it, is we can do that uh exemption thing as they've just proved and and to do the freeze as well. I think the both of them, they've proven, has to be done together for it to benefit everybody. But the wonderful thing about it is it's a win-win for everyone. It's a win-win for us that are low, high, medium, or whatever we are, that overall, the overall picture is a good one. Us seniors are struggling. Um, I say we're struggling, maybe not everyone, but but a great deal of us are. That's why many of them were here. We've had a great deal of them have to leave because they aren't going to bed early. But um but there, everybody I have speak spoken to that has white on their head and and many years down the road uh feel the same as I do, so that's why I'm speaking. Uh, besides the men are chicken, they're sitting back there going like this. But um anyway, I'm not as educated as some of them, but I do know what my budget looks like. And I do know that every time my appraisal rises, um, and then my taxes rise, which this is just recently, um, which uh you can appreciate, been an eye-opener for me. I had to go to my insurance company and to find out that, yeah, Pat, when your appraisal rises and your taxes rise, yes, your insurance rises on your home because of the value of your home, and yes, your deductible rises. That was quite a surprise to me because I just had a horrible accident that in insurance isn't going to pay for. The the key is uh rise your garage door before you go out. And um so I'm having to pay for that, not insurance. But anyway, um, I'm just saying all that to say, I don't have a whole lot more to say because they've done a fabulous job. And my hat is off to you, and thank you for the job that you've done and the extent. And I'm just asking y'all, we're tired. We'd like to go home, but we'd love for you to vote on this and so that we don't have to do this a whole lot more. Uh, we can do it a whole lot more if that's what you want us to do, but we really are. Um, we're looking for a good vote and hoping we came tonight uh in support of them and and for our city and um asking you to please, please support us and please help us. And we are seeing this as a win-win for everyone, and I hope you will see it the same way. And I'm sorry, I didn't say, my name is Pat Warner. And um and I'm, I'm happy to be able to represent our seniors. They asked me to do it, and so here I am. Okay.
Now, Ms. Warner, as I understand, this is not the final vote tonight. This will be part of our, our budget process when it'll be, when it'll be done. But we would give a favorable or unfavorable to them tonight to move forward. Am I right, Pam? Is that how that works?
Okay, because, yeah, I understood. And can you please tell us what, what that is about? I still have a hard time understanding some things, but something about if it's not done right away, then it'll actually cause more work for y'all as far as that you might end up having to send us some return checks or something. Pam, can you?
Sure, sure, sure. So, so part of what I was going to ask tonight on the, on the direction is, is tonight, we're just trying to, to gauge your, your, your wants for this because we do have to enact either or of these by resolution. So we will need to bring you a resolution back for the tax ceiling or bring you a resolution back for the exemption or both. And so, but part of the process is, I would ask that we do that prior to us setting the tax rate. Because she's, she's accurate in, in, in the sense that if this is not done until after the tax rate setting process, there, there becomes an issue where there is a potential of having to do a refund. And that's just something that I'm sure Jason doesn't ever want to have to deal with. He probably has to deal with it anyway, but we don't want to make it worse. And so my ask of you is, if, if this is a direction we want to go, to allow me to know which of these resolutions you would like us to bring to you and allow me to do that on August the second, August the sixteenth at the very latest. Because what I would like to do is, before we start the legal postings of the proposed tax rates and we actually vote on a proposed tax rate on the sixteenth, have this, have this in our tax rate calculation process. Because once he gives me values, we will start working on tho- those calculated tax rates. And knowing where we're going with, with either of these is, is very beneficial to us.
Thank you, Ms. Clear as mud, do you?
No, I do understand.
Okay, great.
And that's, that's the sad part for me because I have a harder time explaining, so I'm so glad that they've done that. I understand when they're telling me and I take it all in, but I don't always repeat things very well. But I hope that y'all understand, and I brought a ten dollar bill with me just to say, we'll pay to vote tonight, but no. But no, actually, but, but the deal is, is that what we're looking at when we talk about shifting and all that is, you know, I had hoped for a dollar, but I just happen to have a ten. But, you know, that on the low end, you know, or like I might be asking you to pay a ten dollar bill, but you're saving me a hundred. And my question to you was, would you be willing to do that? And hopefully you would. I certainly would for you. So we're asking for your help and for you to vote yes, and I won't bother you again, I promise.
Thank, thank you.
I was just going to say, you're making our city attorney very nervous with that ten dollar bill.
But anyway.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate you.
And thank you, and thank you again for considering us. And I hope in the future that we'll be a little bit higher up the list so that we can be here to, to show you our support if we need to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Brandy Cartwright, and I own a home that's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in Nacogdoches. And I just wanted to let you know, just speaking for me personally, I'm more than willing to pay an extra twenty or forty dollars or whatever it was, so that our seniors can have lower tax costs.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Frank Whitehead. I just want to encourage you to move forward with this resolution. And as, in support of Pat, help us old folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a man who's not a chicken.
I feel like I've been here before.
You have to tell us your name anyway.
I'm Sammy Smith, and I just wanted to comment on the, the resolution for us older people. We have a lot of sixty-five and elders and disableds in Nacogdoches. And if you live in the city limits in Nacogdoches and have a homestead, you have free taxes, you have free ad valorem taxes. You have city, Nacogdoches Independent School District and county. County and NISD taxes are frozen for people over sixty-five years old, sixty-five or older. The one of the three that's not frozen is city. I would encourage you to strongly consider freezing the tax for the city as it is for the, NISD and a county. I'm on the appraisal review board for, uh, Jason down there, and I've already heard some, I'm first year on the board, and I've already heard some sad stories from people that are sixty-five or older. There are a lot of sixty-five or elders, and as the lady said a minute ago, your insurance is going up, taxes are going up, everything goes up on your house, but guess what is not going up on a lot of people that are sixty-five and older? Their income stream. So you know where I'm coming from? Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sorry, I just keep forgetting to mention this because I've been searching for other towns and cities. I'm sorry, I'm Pat Warner again. And anyway, there are other smaller towns that are our size towns and whatever that are doing this. And one of them, if you know anybody, in Midlothian, south of Dallas, they have done this. And they did it for their seniors. And they've got an influx of people that are coming in from like the Dallas area, you know, and moving in, just like we've got people coming in from California and everywhere else. And they're having new homes built and all of that. And so they have taken that into consideration and just recently have done that. And I know that there are other small towns that are following that example as well. So I did want to mention that to you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I had one quick comment to make regardless of, of the staff direction, but related to this issue. I think in your last presentation, you discussed programs when people are having difficulty paying, paying for their property taxes. And that was the first time that I had heard of that, and I've never seen it provided publicly anywhere. And so I just, I, I wonder if like on the communication front, regardless of what, what we, we say here, if on the communication front, we can do something to, to, to either highlight those programs or to at least put that information out there. Because unless people go to your office and ask you about it or tell you I'm struggling, they're not going to, they're not going to hear about it. And, and I think that that could go a long way for helping people too.
We can get together, I don't know if that's something that's on the CAD's website now. We could tag to it if it is. If not, we can, we can discuss how we can make that happen through, through the city's website to, to link to them. But we can, we can certainly discuss that.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Any other comments? Mr. Bolden, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm probably the only one on the city council, sixty-five or older. I'm not going to disagree with this thing.
Kind of feeling like the federal government kind of making things to give us all a break. I'm, I'm pretty close myself. Mr. Huckabee?
I just have one question for Ms. Curbo, and it's, it's really related to this item and the next. If we were to proceed with the issuance of CO bonds, would that rate staying the same, that would be at our ceiling for the over sixty-five? And if we were not to issue those COs in this current fiscal year, that rate would drop and then their ceiling would be set at that rate? Is that correct?
I'm, I'm going to have to defer to, to Jason on that. So let me, let me explain to what, what he's talking about. So, so as we go through the, the rate setting process, we have an, an item up for certificates of obligation that if we do or do not issue affects our debt rate, okay? And so what he's asking is, if we do not issue the COs and our debt rate drops this year, and because this is the year that we set the tax ceiling, that's set this year, and then we issue the COs in the following year, which increases the debt rate, is their tax ceiling is set this year on that lower amount? Is that, that, is that your question?
It is.
Yes. So it, it's truly just whatever the tax rate we set this year creates that ceiling correctly? Is, am I understanding how the debt rate works with that?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I thought so, but I wanted to make sure. Whatever the adopted tax rate. Right, the adopted tax rate for 2022 becomes the, the first year of, that becomes your ceiling going forward. So whatever rate we adopt in September, times their valuable taxable value, is their tax ceiling going forward. So yes, if, if the rate goes down, then their tax, tax bill would go down, yes.
And then it would never be able to.
And that would, and that would be their, their ceiling going forward. And, and I think we, we kind of may have jumped a little bit over it, but the only, the only way that that will go up is, is keep in mind if they make a significant improvement or addition to the property or the house, and that is a, a new value to the house, that increases that tax ceiling. And so there, that is how that tax ceiling is raised would be, you know, I think you said like a, a, a new pool or a new add-on of a bedroom or a garage. Those significant improvements to the home creates new value, and that will increase the tax ceiling. But I wanted to make sure that we, we understood that, that it's, yes, it's, it's set as that property is when, when the, the tax ceiling goes into effect. If it's improved upon, then of course the, the tax ceiling will be adjusted as well.
Anything else?
That's all for me.
Okay. Count, I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're beyond public comment, we're deliberating, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bellinger?
I actually, I, I appreciate all of you who spoke, and I appreciate the people who couldn't speak because we're so very late in this meeting. I did a little bit of research. I couldn't, I couldn't pull down three variables out of the census data, but I was considering the people who lived in the county in order to avoid city taxes versus the people who live in the city. And I looked at both the homeownership and, and our poverty rate. And there's a significantly higher homeownership in the county than there is in the city, which is interesting. The city homeowner rate is thirty-seven percent, and the county is fifty-seven percent, which actually includes the city. So it's probably more like six, if you took the city out, it's probably more like sixty-five percent homeowner rate. So I actually think that's a significant, the taxes are a significant motivator. And also our poverty rate, as you well know, is thirty-two percent, whereas in the county it's nineteen percent, which again includes the city's population, so it's a much lower.
Maybe apartments and.
We have a high number of rental property, yeah.
And, and SFA, I know, includes that too. But I do believe that, I, I know we heard some discussion from, from people before saying that this would really help retirees to move in. I think it would help keep people who live here. And I think there's a significant number, I know many, many people who have talked to me and I've talked to, who are very low-income homeowners. And, and this affects them immensely. You know, I've talked with many as part of, as part of Neighborhood Strong Effect. We had a meeting this morning and they said, well, this is a no-brainer. You have to adopt a tax ceiling. And I said, well, there's some people who are concerned about it. I also wanted to mention that we, I know we talk about making sure we keep, we, you know, we don't really want to subsidize people who are very, very wealthy. But we, there are so many people who have limited incomes, no matter what house they live in, when they're sixty-five and older and, or, and/or are disabled. And I am amazed at how many people, they don't want to come forward and say, by the way, I may live in this nice house, but I am thinking I'm going to have to sell or move because I can't afford the taxes. So I'm very much in support of both these, but I probably would settle for the tax ceiling if I had, you know, if I, obviously, if I, I definitely think we have to enact that this year, so.
Thank you, and I need to ask that same question. Your, your idea, are you in favor? What, which is, I think it's just more consensus that we're looking for tonight.
Yeah, the, the six dollar, I mean, to clarify, my concern was never how the general population would be able to absorb that burden. It was more so how low-income people in this community would be able to absorb that burden and what that actually looked like numbers-wise. And so thank you for that calculation, that fifty thousand dollar house, six dollar, because that, that helps me put things into perspective and say, okay, well, in the scheme of things. So, yeah, I, I consensus.
And I'm the same, that was my concern, how it affected that, that low end. And so that was, that is extremely, extremely helpful. So thank you for that. Mr. Bolden, now we've heard from you, I think.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Huckabee?
Yeah, I, I think at minimum, we have to enact a tax ceiling. I, I think we should at least consider some additional exemption depending on whatever amount the, the consensus is among the council.
Okay, does that give you the direction that you need?
It does. So these will be two separate resolutions. So I will definitely have the tax ceiling resolution ready for y'all on August the second. On the exemption resolution, I will need to know what, at what level that y'all would like to, to set that additional because it currently is at twenty. We just chose an additional twenty to run some calculations. You know, just to reiterate kind of what, what we did, because this was, this was a team effort again. But understanding, all we could do is go back and look at what if we had had these for the past two years. Going forward, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what's going to happen with the appraisals. We don't know what's going to happen in the future with, with future debt issuances, you know, not, not this year, but years into the future. And so what we can tell you is that tax ceiling is very minimal rate impact citywide. Now, there is a rather, a penny and a half is a rather significant rate impact for that exemption being doubled. And so just understand, we are looking at the last two years. Had that exemption existed in those last two tax years, that would have been a penny and a half impact. We're not saying it's always going to be a penny and a half because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And so I just want to make sure that y'all understand where we're coming from, is that what we can provide you is, if we had the ceiling and the additional exemption the last two years, this is what the impact would have been. Going forward, we are, we do not know. All that we can tell you is, by history, the tax ceiling provides a very small rate impact across the board where the additional exemption provides a little bit extra impact across the board. And what that happens as we go forward, I don't know. The, the good thing about that is if, if we have some issues that do cause something, we of course could always change that when the tax ceiling is set. But at, at the history that we looked, I don't feel like there's as a significant, a impact on the rate. And so, you know, I can't tell you what's going to happen, but based on past history with values staying the same and rising, both of those were just minimal, minimal impact. And so I can be comfortable in saying that the tax ceiling is something that we can work within our budget and make sure that everybody is happy and it is, it is a doable thing. I'm a little bit concerned on the additional exemption of what that, what that might happen in the future because we just don't have enough data at this point to know what's, what that will do. We can only tell you what it would have done for the last two years. And so that's, that's just kind of, you know, staff's issue is we, we, we understand the need. The tax ceiling, I think, is something that can be done with very minimal impact to the city. The, the additional exemption at this point does, does require a little bit of, of a different increase. And so just be aware of that, that we don't, we can't really tell you what that's going to be going forward. I, I don't want to get up here next year and it'd be a three cent increase and they'll say, well, you didn't tell us that. We don't know. And so that, that's kind of the thing on that, we just, all we have to play with is past numbers.
Okay, with that warning, are we all still on the same page?
So two resolutions and the amount on the resolution.
At forty, I think, is the, is, is, is the assumed.
Okay, I will have those, and we will present those in two individual items on August the second.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Jason, could you see if you could possibly answer her, her question, the lady in, in the back? Okay, so we will move on to H. I'm sorry, to I. Discussion and consideration of resolution of the city of Nacogdoches, Texas approving and. approving and authorizing the publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation and resolving other matters incident and related thereto, Director of Finance.
I do, that would be awesome, thank you. So, it's me again. Um, so tonight we are, are bringing forward, let me switch this, um, s- the, the certificates of obligation that we have been discussing over the past several months. If you'll remember, um, each of the departments made presentations to council back in November and December. Um, it was basically the first time that, that council has ever been presented an entire look at all of the, of the CIP needs, um, that the city has on, on their plate. And in, it was a very big number, if y'all remember, we were all very, um, nervous about what all is, is on, um, tap for, for the city of Nacogdoches going forward. Um, during those processes, we, we discussed, um, some, some prioritization of projects, things that we felt were in imminent, um, uh, danger of failure and those types of things. And so in April, we came to you with a summarization of each of those funds and, and basically prioritized those, um, and, and offered a, a set of funding mechanisms to cover at least all the tier-one, um, projects over the next year or two. And part of that in the general fund was the issuance of certificate obligations, um, to cover some, some items. And we'll go over those and reiterate, um, just as a reminder what those projects were. Um, this process, of course, is, um, as you can imagine, is a very legally-driven process. It takes about twelve weeks to go through all of the legal notices and the preparation for the official statement so that we can sell. Um, based on the current, um, scheduling, tonight we're asking you to adopt the resolution for the intent, um, to, to note it, for the notice of intent to issue these COs. And, um, that is something that kicks off the legal part of this process. The actual sale of the bonds will not be until, um, October. Um, one thing that, that we have, uh, discussed and we'll, we'll talk about the projects, but I do want you to understand in the, in the, the realm of this, the projects and the fundings must be determined prior to the point that we get to the rating process. That's when the, I guess the money kicks in and we sit down and we start talking, um, with the, the bond rating agencies and the bond council, um, becomes involved. And that is at the point, um, that we have to have some, some clear direction in, uh, on projects. And that would be on August the sixteenth, because that's the last, um, city council meeting before we start that process to meet with the, the rating agencies. So, just as a reminder, um, on the issuance timeline, tonight what we're asking is to pass the resolution for the notice of intention to issue COs. And then as part of that process, by August the sixteenth, we need a final decision on the projects to be included in that. Um, and we'll go over the projects that we have proposed right now. And then on September the twentieth, we're asked to pass an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the COs. And I forgot, and I got that a misspelled. Um, and then the closing and the delivery of the, of the bonds will be on October the thirteenth. And, and you'll notice those are three, three council meetings that we will have, um, items related to the CO issuance. As a reminder, the items that we had proposed in April to be included in the CO issue included a central fire station for the relocation of, um, two, the, the fire station five and, one, two, two and five, sorry. Um, and, uh, parks restrooms, there were a, a variety of those. And I, I believe I, I, I presented y'all with those detailed listings of those. I have those available if we need to go over those again, as well as some playgrounds in the parks. Um, five million dollars worth of storm sewer, um, sys- storm system reconstruction and five thousand dollars for the citywide street rebuild. You? Um, that, that totals to nineteen million, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And, um, I do have, um, John Martin with the, um, uh, financial advisors, Hilltop Securities. And he's on, um, he's on the call tonight as well to answer any questions related to the CO issuance. Um, the way this resolution is written is that, um, there are four categories that we can spend money or we should spend money in this CO issuance. And it's very, um, as generic as it can be in each category. So it's fire facilities, um, construction or rehab of fire facilities, um, construction or renovation of parks and construction of, of streets and sidewalks. And it includes all of the, the, the things that go with that, is, is, including right-of-way acquisition, those types of things. Um, and all of those pieces have to be in that resolution. Um, so we do not have to tie that to specific amounts by each category, but we do have to, um, quantify what, where we intend on spending, um, pieces of this money, um, within this CO. And so, um, with that, I will, uh, if you have any questions of me, but I, I know John would probably be able to answer the, the CO process a little bit more, but I will be happy to answer anything that, that you might have.
So, he, he's on?
He's on, he was.
John, did you want to enlighten us?
Uh, good evening, um, I'm John Martin with Hilltop Securities. Thank you so much, um, for having me, uh, this evening and allowing me to join, uh, by song with you all. Um, Pam gave a great overview of, um, the steps to be taken, uh, tonight is the, is the first step, where you're just setting a, um, an intent, uh, to issue the COs and, and publication of a resolution. Uh, the resolution authorizes the city secretary to publish this intent, uh, that sets forth, uh, the categories, uh, a not-to-exceed amount. And, um, then as, as Pam said, you know, if, um, things change, if you want to move things around, if you want to, uh, not go forward, um, we, we have until, um, uh, before we talk to the rating agencies, uh, which is, um, the, towards the end of August. And so at your next council meeting, uh, you'd really need to make certain you guys are, are good moving forward.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'd open it to the public, any, any comment in the public? Yes, yes ma'am?
My name's Brandy Cartwright and, um, I am here to let you know about my support for the parks and the bathrooms, of course, because I'm with the Parks Advocacy League. And we're always, um, we always think that having parks, um, updated in our par- in our city is important to, um, both retaining families in our city and encouraging families to move here. And so, um, and of course, the, you know, economy is all crazy right now. But, um, I think it, in the future, that, um, parks are gonna be an important activity for families. Um, and we think that in upgrading these specific parks as well, because Mill Pond is a, is a neighborhood park. Um, McCrimmon is a neighborhood park. Both of them have very dilapidated equipment right now. McCrimmon only has a swing set that I'm not even sure has swings at the moment and one little climbing structure. And, um, and they're metal and they're very, very old. Um, and Mill Pond is the same. They don't even have, they haven't been updated in many, many, many decades. Um, and of course bathrooms, we get tons and tons of message, messages about bathrooms at about every single park. So we are so excited to see updates to the bathrooms at Vinita and the bathrooms, um, a- added to, or updated at McCrimmon and, um, Mill Pond as well. So we're excited to see all these.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the Nacogdoches City Commission. I appreciate y'all. Lot of, lot of time and effort you're putting into all this business, you know, and, uh, so I appreciate it. Uh, thank you for allowing me to make a few really brief, brief comments, okay? I don't have, uh, detailed information on the various bond items, but I am concerned about one item above others. A new central fire station for eight million dollars. This amounts to forty percent of this budget, uh, of this bond that we're discussing this evening. According to Daily Sentinel, and that's the only in- information I have, I don't have any, you might say insider information or about anything, I just, what I know is what I read in the paper and that's the only way I can make a decision about what I've read. But apparently an insurance representative came to Nacogdoches and questioned or suggested the locations of these various, uh, stations here in our town to be located maybe somewhere else more strategically possibly. So, uh, uh, the, and so that's one reason we're having, I'm having this discussion with you tonight. And, and I've, I've found out, uh, thinking about this, that the role of the fire department has, has changed. As Chief Kip- Kiplinger has already said tonight, you know, firefighting is, is a low, uh, is a low activity for them. If you take a look at page three, uh, 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 of, 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 of my little numbers there on the back, back page, uh, you'll see that, uh, the, uh, calls that I've ke- I kept up with, you, you may think I'm kind of spooky for doing something like that, but I, I don't know, I just, I just got into that. So on, on page three with the newspaper, uh, business, Jimmy and, uh, that one there. Page three of that one there. You'll see that there were twenty-one hundred and seventy calls, uh, that I just kept up with. There, there, uh, I, I stopped in, uh, it was in February, but anyhow, there was, uh, sixty percent of, of the calls are from medical assists. Nine, nine and a half, uh, nine point four are for veh- vehicle crashes, two point four for structured fires, and twenty-seven point six percent are for miscellaneous calls like fire alarms, unauthorized burns and that sort of thing. So, uh, medical a- assists are, uh, are our largest, uh, activity of the fire department now, you know? In addition to this twenty-seven point six percent of things that are like, uh, uh, alarm mal- malfunctions and things like that. So, uh, six out of ten calls that, that, uh, that they re- that they receive are for medical assistance, you know? Only, uh, like two and a half calls per one hundred calls that they received are for a fire. So, uh, i- if, if they got twenty calls a day and, uh, sixty percent, uh, of them are for, uh, are for medical assistance, that's, 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 that's twelve calls. Maybe a half an hour per call or an hour per call for these trucks to go out with two or three personnel in them and so forth and, and to come back anywhere from a half an hour to an hour. But it's a, it's a lot of time when these vehicles are out of these buildings. So, uh, what I'm, what I'm really getting down to is that the strategic location of buildings, maybe that were, that were suggested by some insurance person, maybe it's not so, so strategic after all. I mean, a lot of the times the trucks are not in the buildings, they're out in the community doing this and that, not, not in, in a fire capacity. So I just wanted you to, uh, uh, know about this, this, this information's kind of interesting to me and maybe it is to you, but, uh, the, the role of a fire department is, is kind of changed. I, I think, I guess Keith would back me up on that. But what I want you to, uh, do is, uh, is the new station a want or is the new station a need? And so I want, w- would want you to put some extra thought into that. And, uh, and then if, if you're not comfortable with it, uh, this evening or whenever, or in August, take that, uh, fire station out and, and the other items on that, uh, thing and move ahead, you know? But, uh, I just want you to, there, there are probably issues involving these buildings and whatnot that I don't know about and there be, so I, I don't have those in my, uh, my decision-making process. But based on what, uh, these, these numbers look like to me, it looks like the, 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 the location of these buildings is not so strategic after all, because the trucks are not there quite, in quite a significant amount of time. So I just wanted y'all to, uh, have that information in, in, in your, uh, thought processes about this, uh, about this new station. It's a lot of, it's, it's, it's a, it's a lot of money and, and, uh, so I just wa- I thought you might want to, uh, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Carolyn Davis. I really just have questions, because I don't understand, oh, good, I can look at it here. Are we talking about nineteen or twenty million dollars we're gonna borrow? That's what the bond certificate of obligation means, we're gonna have bonds and so we're gonna borrow this money? And the little bit that I know about bonds, aren't these certificates of obligations typically used when a city needs some sort of immediate? Like I've heard y'all talk about our dire need of water, the, the water system, the pipes in town. That we, I remember something y'all had said about we were, uh, gonna have to borrow two million dollars for an immediate fix for our water lines. But I don't see that, is that, can, is that under storm and sewer repair? Or is that gonna be an additional two million? So those are my questions, it's just, are we borrowing this much money? Is it typical to borrow this much money without going to the public? And is this, does this really cover all of our needs?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Pam, you want to address those?
So these, these are certificates of obligation and, and John Martin can jump on and, and, and talk a little bit about what you can and can't do with, with some of, some of these, um, funds. Um, but, um, so I make sure that I understand what, um, what the, the actual questions were. Is, is this a typical amount? Um, you know, um, every city, this is, this is a, a normal, not every city, sorry. In a lot of cities, this is a normal process in the way that you fund infrastructure. Um, here it has not been that way in the past, because the reason that we have and we brought to y'all almost two hundred million dollars worth of projects is we have kind of kicked the can on some of these and just deferred maintenance on items. And so, yes, we do have a very large, we do have a very large amount of, of items that need to be done. And I will tell you in some other cities, what this process is, is there is an ongoing rolling process with these, with these bond issuances as debt rolls off, they issue new debt, and they're consistently working on infrastructure needs across the city on an ongoing basis. And that's something that we haven't done here in the past. And so that's, that's one of those things that, you know, you'll see cities that'll do five million or ten million, but they're doing it every other year. And so you'll see lots of cities that do twenty million every other year. Th- it, it just depends on, on, on the capacity, um, of, of each city. And each city has different, you know, philosophies on how they fund things. And so for a while here, we had the philosophy that we were going to try to cash fund everything. And unfortunately, we cannot accumulate the cash fast enough to, to, um, address some of these significant needs. Um, I'm gonna let John kind of talk to the, the issue, um, with what all we can and can't do with, with the certificates of obligation. But I will say that in the process of the CIP meetings, um, we did, um, break down the, you know, almost two hundred million dollars worth of projects into tiers and what, what needed to be done now over all funds. So the water fund, the sewer fund, everything was, was, um, encapsulated in, in each fund by tier. And so, and we had a plan going in, in place for each of those. And so, um, I, I do know that we have like eight million dollars of, of the ARPA funds that we're investing now and we're starting that, kicking off that process to, to work on sewer lines, um, and some water lines with the second tranche of that money. Um, and so we have some cash funding, we, we do have, um, um, a great amount of reserves in the utility fund, because we have been trying to cash fund some of these for a while. And so we have some plans that, that we had laid out in April to start some, um, water and sewer lines with cash reserves. And then we also had a plan going forward, if you'll recall, to do a revenue bond issuance in the future year, um, about nine million dollars to wrap up the, the utility needs. And so this is just the piece of all of our needs across the city tier ones. And there's multiple ways that we were proposing to fund. Some of them were with cash, some of them with revenue bonds, some of them with a potential, um, um, rate increase if that is needed to cover that in, in those areas of utility and sanitation. These were all general fund items, these were our tier-one items in the general fund. And so that's why these were chosen, um, to, to be funded through the CO, because we do not have twenty million dollars cash on hand in the general fund to fund these with cash. And so that was kind of the thought process on splitting that up across, across the, um, all projects, trying to, to, uh, is, hit as many of the tier-one projects as, as we possibly could.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So the, um, certificates of obligation are, between that and tax notes, are by far and away the most common, uh, form. are by far and away the most common, uh, form of debt issuance for Texas cities. Uh, and, and we did a study, uh, that showed in, uh, last year in two thousand twenty-one, roughly ninety-two percent of debt issued by, um, by Texas cities was in this form. Um, and it, it allows you to do a number of things, uh, the certificates of obligation, the issuance, uh, allows you to do a variety of projects, uh, really under one issuance. And I have to break them out into, uh, separate, separate types of, uh, uh, bonds per, by project. You can pool these. And that way, for example, if you're looking at, you know, your, your, um, if your, uh, stormwater repairs should, uh, come in at eight hundred thousand rather than a million, then you could take that two hundred thousand and apply it towards, um, towards parks or, uh, streets or whatever it may be. Um, so you can mix, mix and match and you have general consensus of what the, what your, uh, projects are in, in the notice that you're, you all are looking at tonight. And, uh, this is, um, when we go to the voters, when voted bonds are, are typical for, uh, for what we see for, uh, really non-infrastructure type needs and health, safety and welfare needs. Um, it's more along the lines of what you see for, um, arenas, uh, city halls, um, those types of things that, that might be, um, con- considered, um, maybe a want rather than a need. Um, so, uh, I do want to point out also that the, in terms of the amount chosen here and backing into is, is a, is all the, the total, uh, CIP plan and, and the, uh, projects needed, that this was back then to really impact, uh, to whether or not be a tax rate increase on the interest and sinking fund tax rate. So we backed into that based upon, um, based upon current interest rates and projected, uh, taxable values.
Great, thank you, thank you for that explanation. And, and I should have called, I didn't see you back there, chief, I should have called on you earlier. Did you want to comment regarding Mr. Moore's, uh, comments? Did you have anything, kind of the rationale maybe?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council, thank you. Um, we, an insurance person didn't come to town. We, uh, council authorized us to hire a civil engineering firm to come do a study, uh, on our fire station locations with regard to their current locations, uh, optimized locations, and the potential for us to go from five stations to four and still adequately serve the community. And that happened two years ago. Uh, we got that report from, from Mr. Peach, who is an insurance, uh, fire protection insurance expert. That's what he's spent his whole career doing. And he's realized that we could reduce the number of stations from five to four, um, by making some strategic moves over a period of, a period of time. What that allows us to do is to never have two firefighters on a fire truck ever again. It's not safe. No fire chief in Texas or the nation or the world will tell you that's an okay situation to have. And so going from five stations to four is a much more cost-effective way for us to increase our staffing to a minimum of three firefighters every day than adding the twelve firefighters that we would have to add on the payroll. And Pam just had a little, little minor stroke, I think, when I said that. But in order to, to have the same effect, we would have to add twelve employees, twelve full-time employees, um, that we would have to pay for in perpetuity. In addition, we have, we're talking about this station, we're consolidating two fire stations into one. One of those stations is sixty-nine years old and one is seventy years old. They've, we've gotten our money's worth out of them, uh, they've done a good job. Uh, but we're talking about building another seventy-year building, uh, to replace those two facilities. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, sir. Any other, uh, public comment? Okay. Counsel, uh, your thoughts? Maybe I'll start with you, Mr. Huckabee, I don't think I've started with you yet.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I don't really have any questions. I spent about two and a half hours with Ms. Kirby last week, uh, and then an hour or so with Mr. Canizares the, the week before, or I guess it was the same week. Have real concerns about us issuing debt, not issuing debt in the amount of our current in, interest and sinking debt rate, just because that's the amount that we have now. I want to say that I understand that we have significant infrastructure needs, we have significant capital improvement needs. I, I think having gone to every single fire station in our city, that we need a new central fire station. I think we need to be meticulous about the planning of that central fire station. The living conditions that some of our firefighters are living in, I would not personally want to live in those conditions. And I want to make sure that we, we take care of, of those men and women. To add on to that, uh, here it is, uh, nine-thirty at night, and we're about to vote on a resolution to spend twenty million dollars and keep a debt rate of eight cents for a hundred dollars valuation. All of this together, I, I think we should take this process and stretch it out a little bit longer and really have community input on, on these issues and these capital improvement needs. And then I don't think the council should unilaterally make the decision to issue debt. I know that may be what ninety percent of municipalities do to issue debt. Did I cut out there for a second?
No, you're clear.
Okay. I don't think that's the way we should do it. I think we should get community input and involvement and go through a bond process and have the public decide this. Just my thoughts.
Thank you.
At minimum weight to proceed with this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bolden?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I mean, I do have concerns about the overall of the vote. But there is not an item on that list that's, in my opinion, that's not needed. Those are not want, that's not a want list, that's a needed list. And as far as the certificate of obligation, I think, I mean, I, I know that that happens, be, change, maybe a governor, government, uh, in order to have the public vote on it. But yes, I know, I understand that, uh, the voters would like an opinion and I'd have no problem with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
What was the time constraint here?
Okay, so this, this all revolves around the tax rate setting process. And so in order for us to proceed, not only with the sale of the COs, that's, that's one time constraint, but us being able to propose and adopt a tax rate is another. And so this is a significant impact on whether the tax rate, the debt rate stays where it is with this thing or whether it is reduced by the, the debt that rolls off and we do not issue the CO. And so what I need to be able to, to communicate to the CAD is whether we are, in fact, going to look at issuing debt in the next fiscal year. Because what they do is the tax rate setting process, they ask, what is your proposed debt service for the next year? Because that, what they're going to do is they're going to set the rate in order to recover that, um, that, um, those debt payments, principal and interest payments. And so in order for us to go through that tax rate setting process, I need to know if we're going to issue the COs. And so we also need to know, as far as the sale of the COs, we, we mentioned earlier, that piece is, and, and John mentioned as well, September, I think first or the second, is when they meet with the rating agencies. We have to, at that point, have the amount and the, um, the projects in place. So August the sixteenth, sixteenth is the last meeting before that date. And so as far as the issuance of the COs, August the sixteenth is that date. As far as ta- setting the property tax rate, I need to have some direction on that nail because, um, he, uh, he, I'm sorry, uh, Jason will begin that process. Once the certified values are set at the end of July, he begins that rate calculation process. And so I have to present to him as part of that, what is our proposed debt load for the next year? And so I need to be able to give him an idea if, if we're going to have a, a CO issuance in the next year or not.
So stretching this out would mean not doing anything this year and bumping it to the next fiscal year, is that correct?
Um, as far as.
So like not making a decision?
Yes, because we, we will, we will have to ratify this, the tax rate by September the thirteenth. So we have to calculate it and, and propose it and bring it to you before then. But yeah, after September the thirteenth, um, it's, it's, the tax rate is set until next year.
Okay, I mean, so my concern is, is the reason that we are in this position of needing twenty million dollars worth of projects is because of deferred maintenance, which is what now we're talking about doing again. Um, and we talked about each one of these things extensively in November and December. Um, I heard from community members, from members in my ward, and, and, and forever, I've heard people complaining about each and every one of these things. Um, I just, I, I don't think that we can afford to defer maintenance any longer, that's what I think.
Ms. Bellinger?
Captain, we've something out, uh, here, Pam and.
Oh.
Counsel.
Sure.
Um, the, uh, this is a notice of intent to issue, this does not obligate, uh, the issuance of debt. Tonight's action does not. Um, so you have, uh, you know, if you gave the notice of intent tonight, you decide to move forward, even if you gave a legal publication, um, it's, it's not a done deal, so to speak, until we, uh, get down to the actual, um, bond sale in September. So, um, you know, you'd have some time to hash over, hash over this over the next couple of weeks certainly, um, you know, before you get to that August meeting, if you would like. Just want to make sure that everybody understands that you're not committing, that you're not absolutely committing, uh, to, uh, putting twenty million dollars on tax rolls just tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John, I, I had forgot to mention that.
But yes, this, this, this starts the process, but this in no way commits you to completing the process. We will still have those meetings in August to, to discuss this, um, again, before we go to the, to the rating agencies. And like you said, even if we, we have posted those le- legal notices, it does not obligate us to issue the COs. But, but still, we have, we have to have those, those decisions before we, we meet with the rating agencies. So that does, that does give us August, but it doesn't give us past August.
Right, if you, if for a, if for a bond vote, um, that could happen and you have time to put it on, if, if you chose that route, you'd have to call that bond election, uh, by, I believe it's August, uh, eighteenth, maybe nineteenth, somewhere in there, um, for the November election. And you would not sell the bonds until January or February of next year. So, um, you know, that's part of the point too of, of why cities are, um, tend to issue more of the COs and tax notes versus voted bonds because it just takes so long.
Thank you. Council member.
Um, how much are our reserves right now?
In general fund, um, we have not updated through this fiscal year. Um, when we were looking in March at mid-year, we had, um, approximately five and a half to six million dollars was our estimated ending above our twenty-five percent reserve. Um, now we have, we have, I haven't gone back and, and pulled out. We've had a couple of, of, um, budget amendments that we have done this fiscal year that I'll need to pull out, but nothing significant. So I think we're, I think we're still going to be sitting close to the fifty percent mark where we are required to keep the twenty-five.
And then the, um, utility fund, does that include the?
That's just the general fund, that's just the general fund, utility fund, um, if I remember, I have that. I think we had a fourteen million dollars over the, um, reserves in April when we were discussing all these because at that point, we had proposed about eight million dollars worth of those projects to cash fund because we do have fourteen million dollars available in that fund.
So I think one of the issues is, do you borrow or do you save in order to, uh, fund projects? And I think, um, and I, I know one of the philosophies prior to this was we need to save up in order, which is partly why we have the, these reserves, um, rather than to borrow because, um, we actually end up, how, how much do, do we pay for, um, for something totally if we borrow over a, are we talking about a twenty, twenty-five year period?
Um, yes, these, and, and I think, John, you may have that with you, but the, the total all-in principal and interest on these, uh, on these at a, not to exceed twenty-one, do you have that available?
I, yes, ma'am. So we're, um, the, uh, the payments would be, uh, we'd have some of it amortized over twenty years and some of it amortized over twenty-five years, just as an example. Um, so the estimated, um, principal amount we were showing is, and on the not to exceed twenty-one million one hundred was with, uh, then, uh, about eleven point seven million of interest, which would total you to about thirty-two point eight million total over, and that's over a twenty-five year period. And that's using, um, a four percent. Keep in mind that the inflation rate these days is nine percent. So these projects are going to keep going up. Um, and that's, um, uh, while you look at, you know, borrowing at four percent, it's try, it's hard to keep up, you know, it's on the pay-as-you-go basis, to be able to fund all these projects. When the cost of these projects keep going up eight, nine, ten percent every year, you can borrow at four percent. So that's why the federal government gives, gives the ability to issue tax exempt bonds.
Right, so I'm looking at, looking, using our reserves versus borrowing. Um, I have a lot of questions. Um, do we have, um, do we actually have plans for the fire station? Do we, we went from like April sixth where we were talking ideas, you know, that these are the kinds of things that we think are important. And now we're leaping over here to, uh, certificates of obligation. And I, I would hope we have more details for all these, like plans for the restrooms, plans for the playgrounds, um, the central fire station, um, studies on the impact of moving from downtown, um, neighborhood. Uh, I, I just would like some more information.
So each of the department heads that made those presentations, they were in the process of, of, of gathering those, those, um, estimates and those types of things. And I know that some of them have been working, I know Keith has been working diligently on, on firming up what those, those costs would actually be. And he can, he can probably talk to that, but.
Yeah, just cost per square foot, I mean, I, actual plans before we decide we're going to issue debt.
So I'm, I'm, I'm no city engineer, so please, Steve, if you're still here. But, but a lot of these, the, the, the upfront cost, the design of, of these big projects is a, a cost in, in, or it's a, it's a long-term process and there's a significant cost in doing that. And until we get the go-ahead to fund these things, there's a lot of those pieces, if I'm correct, that we cannot do until we have the, the fundings in place to start a lot of that. So as far as, as the background and getting what projects and what those, those overall estimates, they've spent a lot of time working on that. But as far as actually starting the design and doing those things, we have to have that revenue source in place because those are going to start sending bills that have to be paid to start that design process. And so in, in some of those areas, especially on streets and storm sewers and those types of things, that's, that's a process that can't begin until after, after we get into the thing. Now, as far as laying out what we're looking at, I know Steve, and he may want to speak to that, but Steve has looked at, with this five million dollars, what are we going to be able to accomplish with streets? And he's done, uh, uh, probably has a list in his mind of, of potential streets that need to be addressed in this, potential areas for those. So that work has been going on in the background, we just can't kick it off until we actually have the funding in place to do that.
Well, so, um, just to make a long story short, because it's, what time is it?
Almost ten.
Ten o'clock. Um, I, I am very uncomfortable, um, even, um, without public input, without actually going to the public and, and showing what it is that we're proposing, what people's ideas are, if they have thoughts about leveraging dollars, if they have thoughts about, there's a, a lot of things that I think we need. This is part of being honest and transparent and collaborating with the public. So I'm very uncomfortable unless we actually go and let the public have input about their priorities and alternatives. Um, and I also am uncomfortable having the discussion if I don't have an accurate idea of what our income is and our expenditures for next year. I know I've asked all those things every single time we've met, you know, what is it? We, we talked already about having a revenue bond. We, we talked already about having a revenue bond in the future years. What is that? I want to know what it is we're, we're asking of the taxpayers and, um, and of our citizens. So I would rather push this down the road and, um, and get public input into all of those. I just, I think otherwise we're imposing our own will, um, on people. And not just now, not now, but for decades to come. So, um, I'm very uncomfortable doing that.
We have been studying this ever since I've been on this council. In fact, we were talking about it, I was talking about it in my campaign as I was running for this. Pam made me aware of a bond that was going to pay off in September, that's in two months from now, that would allow us money to, to, to address these needs. We studied the needs. We determined that the city's got a hundred and fifty to two hundred million dollars in deferred maintenance, because we've not done these things. We kicked the can down the road. We've waited, we've studied, we've thought, we've pondered. We've been talking about this. We've had meetings. We've had public meetings over and over and over again. We've talked about these things. We've talked about how we're going to fund water. We're going to fund, we're going to fund the water needs through our reserves. We're going to fund the storm sewer needs through this. We're going to fund them from all these different sources. We're going to use some of our federal funds that we've got. Um, we, we've come up with a plan to fund about fifty million dollars worth of capital improvements through a combination of bonded indebtedness, reserves, and the money that we got from the federal government. And it'll, it's a Band-Aid. It gets us started. It's all we can do for the next couple of years. We, that's what Steve tells us. We've got failing infrastructure. We've got tier-one things we've got to take care of now. We've got tier-two things that we can take care of, um, i- in the next tranche. But, but we have got to get started. We can't just let our city, uh, go to nothing and sit by and study it and think about it and kick the can down the road. That's where we are. That's why we've got the deferred maintenance that we've got now. We've got the winter storm that we dealt with. It decimated our streets. We can't catch up. Steve says he's got to have more money to get the streets to a level that we can maintain them going forward. That's in here. Uh, we've got playgrounds. It's embarrassing for people to come to this festival down here in the park, and we don't even have a bathroom. We've got to, we've got to put them in a porta potty. So we've got, we've got to move forward. Uh, fire stations, uh, Mr. Huckabee said, I've been, I've visited the fire station. That was the first thing I did. I think we've all done that. It's, it, it's, it's, it's unacceptable, the conditions that, that our firemen live in and work in. So we, i- it's time. We did a home improvement loan twenty years ago. It pays off in September. We have more improvements. Our house has deteriorated in the last twenty years. We've got to reinvest that money and move ourselves, move ourselves forward. We can't just sit around and kick the can. It's, it's time to, it's time to move forward.
Mayor, if I could make one more comment, please. I, you know, in this entire discussion, I don't think anyone has said we don't need to address these things. I, every, everything that you mentioned has to be done. I don't disagree with that in the least. But I, I don't think that this body should utilize its, its own unilateral authority to do this when we can give it to the people and probably get it approved. It just means waiting a few more months. We're not talking about twenty years down the road. This is exactly what we did in two thousand and two. The council unilaterally made the decision on the things that were important to, I guess, that council at the time. But was that what the public wanted? And I, I can't in good conscience move forward with this today. I can't put someone else's, you know, we're talking twenty or twenty-five years worth of debt, which we know we need ten times, or five times this much money to spend on it. Are we going to be able to borrow to that extent if we do this now?
Uh, the question isn't a, a few months or not. It's, it's, we give direction and we start moving forward. Um, or we have to wait until next year.
So, so John, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, so walk us through the, the vote option. So if, if they choose to, to not pass this resolution and go the CO route, and they choose to try to, um, get on the November ballot.
Right.
What, do we still set the tax rate based on the assumption?
No.
Okay, so we, we would still have to, okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to double check that.
Yeah, you'll be, you'll be too far down the road and it's, um, and you do not have assurance that the.
That it'll pass.
That the bond measure will carry, right.
So it won't be until next year?
So we wouldn't be able to start, because we wouldn't be able to have any monies to, you know, we couldn't set the tax rate until the next year to recoup the funds to pay the principal and interest on that. So we can do the vote in November, but it pushes the actual expenditure until the next year.
Right.
Twenty-third, when you set the tax rate this time next year, that's correct.
Right. So we're not talking a couple of months. We are talking about kicking the can down the road. Yeah. Um, I mean, I think we just, we, it looks like you need direction from a majority, I guess, at this point.
I, I would assume so, Mr. Attorney.
And, and we all, we're already spending our reserves. I mean, we can spend reserves to fund these things. I'm not talking about, um, not funding things we have to have.
So, so let, let me, let me verify that, though, because, clarify that. We have available reserves in general fund, which these are all general fund items, so we can only use general fund for that, above our thing of about approximately five million. And that is, that includes, we've already talked tonight about the assignment pay for fire and police. That's a piece of it. The retention payment is a piece of it. So there's, there's five million, and we've got twenty million dollars worth of projects, plus the capital equipment that we're going to be bringing to you. So, so understand, that would be great. You can pick one of these maybe to do. Uh, we can might do part of the parks with cash, but funding this with cash, we don't have that, and it has taken us years to build up the reserves that we have in the general fund right now. So I just want to clarify that, make sure you, you understand that there is not the, the cash to fund these currently.
So.
Go ahead.
I'm just saying, what, what do you need? Do you need consensus, or do you need a resolution? And thus voted up or down, or how do we?
So passing this resolution, like John said, passing this resolution tonight does not lock you into issuing these COs, but it does start the process so that if you decide within the next two council meetings in August to proceed, then we've already started the process. We've started the legal notices, and we don't have to start at that point, because it's been done and we've started the process. Now, we can stop that process, it, before the end of August, before we, we really get into the rating agencies. So just, just so you're understanding, this resolution does not say we are going to issue the COs. It's just we are intending to do that. You can change your mind.
Do you need a vote?
Well, before that.
For the resolution, yes.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, let's, let's, let's do that. Got ahead of myself.
Hi. If you need two hundred million dollars, that's what you need, right? Is that what you said? So why don't, why don't we do a bond like you did for the school, so the public can fold on it? Because if you do twenty.
We can't afford it. We can't afford two hundred million dollars. Well, how, how do we afford twenty million?
School, school districts don't have a choice but to go to the voters.
I'm sorry, what?
School districts do not have a choice but to go to the voters. That's the only way that they can fund capital improvement.
Mr. Mall, we've, we've got a note that pays off.
Right.
And the payment from that note would, would service this new note. Right?
But, but I mean, wh- wh- why is there such fear of just going to the public and saying, should we do this or should we not? I mean, it's a big pond you guys are swimming into. It's a lot of money, you know? Seems like the public ought to have a voice in this. And I'm not trying to be against you. I don't want to kick the can down the road. You're kicking our taxes, our wallet down the road, you know? And I know you're passionate about it. I understand that. But I think everybody's passionate about it. It just, it just feels like something that the public ought to have a voice in. If nothing else, they could just vote and say, go for it, you know? But they might also say, slow down. Th- this is a really hard time in our country right now with inflation and, and I know in, in taxpayers' lives, they hunker down during this time. They don't start spending on everything. They don't, you know, everybody's like, do I go out to the restaurants five times a week, or do I cut it back to one time a week now? And it seems like that's what the public is doing, but the city is just like, nope. Just, just, everybody needs a raise, and everybody's, we, they're not going to deal with inflation. It's the taxpayers that are going to deal with inflation. And I just think maybe you should ask them what they think about this. I'm not trying to hurt you, you know? I'm not trying to hurt poor people. I just, I just feel like it's such a big decision for five people to be making, especially when times are hard, and times are about to get a lot harder. That's all.
Thank you.
Can we hold a public meeting next week?
Let's, let's finish, let's go with public. Come in.
So, Brandy Cartwright again. Uh, I just wanted to say that I feel that the public is involved in your decisions, because I voted for Ms. Fisher, and I communicate with her regularly. The public has access to you guys. They can, if they're interested in this, they can talk to you. They can come up and say, you know what? I don't want to, and, issue this, you know, bond. I don't know a lot about bonds and how we've paid stuff off. But when I moved here, my son was two years old. And we had to, to beat the squeaky wheel, and we had to come and say, you know what? We need some better parks. We need some better, you know, we need all of these things. Um, and my kid is about to be thirteen, and we're just now getting to bathrooms at Maroni, which thankfully, everybody is, you know, that's, that's an issue that is now, you know, done. Um, and I know that that's on the plan and, um, everything, which I'm very thankful for. But, um, I just wanted to say that I think that I do have access to, um, to you guys. And while it would be nice to have a two hundred million dollar bond, I am pretty sure that our public would not vote yes for a two hundred million ba- dollar bond, so.
Thank you. Let, Ms., can you let Ms. Keenan first?
I wasn't ready. I was macking. I'm Ann Keenan, and I just wanted to kind of repeat what Brandy said, that I think the public is very involved, and anybody who wants to be involved and is paying attention can absolutely. We were all involved when we elected you all, and we elected y'all as our leaders. So as leaders, I agree with Jimmy, you can't keep kicking the can down the road, and you can't go to the public with every decision that you make as leaders. You're the ones that have been going to budget meetings. You talked to the police chief. If, if I had to vote on the bond, and I hadn't heard what the chief had to say about the fire station and that we were, why we were combining them and all the reasons for that, I would probably vote against it. You know, you're the ones with the information. You're the ones that know what's going on. You represent the people that have elected you, and it's up to you to make these tough decisions and not just blame it on the public and do what they want. You do what's right for your community. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bartlett, you're up, I think.
Mayor, Council, Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. So I want you to understand one thing. A lot of things that are on our list, our preliminary list, that go in the storm drains in the street areas are monies that we will spend whether you approve these COs or not. So I have two point, um, two million dollars worth of storm drain projects right now that are shovel-ready. And they are only shovel-ready because they are critical, they're failing, and we have to do them. So if we don't move forward with this funding mechanism, then I'm coming back to you to say, we've got to go to reserves. We've got to pull some other mechanism to do that in not a year from now. And I have an additional three point nine million dollars, and that's a fuzzier estimate of drainage projects that have come to us from your constituents, from things we've seen, and things that we still think are critical failure items in our near future. So that, that's what I want you to understand, both in your streets category and your storm drain category. We're going to have to spend this money, whether it's part of the COs or not. And I'm going to come to you for other solutions, because I don't know how else to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Real quick, I know Mr. Martin said that, that the earliest you could put something on the ballot would be August. But, um, you know, the pa- past bond programs that I've participated in, there's usually a political action committee, a group of citizens that go and, and, and help push on behalf of these programs to be able to explain to the public, because staff can only go, the city can only really provide the facts. The political action committee can go and, and do much more than that and really push, uh, go to the various groups and, and speak on behalf of the merits of these programs. We can speak on the facts. Um, August is just around the corner. I would dare say it would be difficult, I think, just from an administrative perspective, to put something on this November's ballot. Uh, Texas law allows two uniform election dates, one's in May and one's in November. So in essence, the earliest probably, and when I say earliest, uh, to be able to do it, manage it well, would be May, which would mean you would have to call the vote theoretically in February, which is very possible, but it would be May. And if you don't do it in May, it'd be next November. So it'd basically be a year from now. So regardless whether you want to do the COs, again, as, as Ms. Carbo mentioned, this has been an ongoing conversation, certainly since before I got hired. Um, it's been going on for quite some time. Um, we have presented to, I have, I know Mayor, you have too, presented to, to a number of civic organizations. I've attended a number of ward meetings, and there's been plenty of opportunities to be able to speak on behalf of those ward, at those ward meetings related to these projects. Uh, they haven't come up, but I've been present to be able to speak to them. Um, so, uh, and certainly, Mr. Bartlett's been available to speak to them. So we're ready and able to go speak. Every time I go and speak, I ask if I can go speak in front of small groups, big groups, medium-sized groups. We're here to go on the road show. We're, we're ready, and we have been ready, and we've been, we've had our script ready since April. And none of you council members have asked us to go speak at any of these group meetings, and we've been ready to go. So that's all I have to say.
So I'd like to reply to that. Um, it's not the speaking, it's the listening. Um, since April sixth, um, we've had, uh, uh, I probably, um, should have waked to the notion that one day it'd just drop on here and we'd have to make the decision. I just assumed that we would be asking people. But after you do speak, for example, at Rotary, several people have come up to me and voiced concerns about different things and, um, and different priorities and different, and I just assumed it would come up sometime in the public, and I shouldn't have presumed it, where we could have an open discussion about the kinds of things we were thinking about, if, if there were other priorities people had, because that, you know, like Mr. Moore, there were, there are some concerns that people have about very specific items, about the cost of items, about leveraging dollars. I know there are some places that have leveraged all kinds of dollars for, not for storms and sewers and the citywide rebuild. You know, those are just a given. I mean, we gotta, those costs, you know, you, you have. But other ones, there are ways to le- leverage them. I mean, we actually saw CDBG dollars that could fund some of those. Um, I am very sorry we didn't have a public discussion and a listening session between April sixth and now. I, um, you know, we've had other things we've been dealing with. Uh, I think that is what we really needed to have, is a listening session, not a on-the-road sales. That's a whole different ballgame. So, and, and I still have a lot of question. Do we actually, have we selected a new location for the fire station al- already? Is there one that we?
That's on your agenda, an executive session, hopefully tonight.
So we've already thought of one that we're going to have. So some of these things, have we made any informal offers or something?
No, ma'am.
Or received? Okay, but I mean, we, there is going to be an offer on the, so some of these things, I think, have, people have made progress that I'm not sure we are.
Councilmember, is we've analyzed locations. We're ready to have a conversation with you all in executive session, because we've identified some properties. Uh, but really, at the end of the day, we're just looking for direction.
So have we, so one of my questions on this, even before. So have we, so one of my questions on this, even before we go to, um, for a certificate of obligation is, have we looked at the impact from downtown and the impact from that neighborhood? These are all things that, that, you know, back in April, I would have asked, except I thought we were just kind of having ideas and prioritizing ideas instead of going into the implementation phase.
I mean, the direction we received from April is that we were, had identified these as our priorities. You all provided the consensus that these were. And then Ms. Carbo provided the calendar that we would be coming to you in July.
Well, well, actually, I still had all those questions about the, you know, the utility funds and how, how much we'd be, you know, which, how mu- We're, we're here talking about this when we don't know our income and we don't know our expenses too. It's kind of, but that's, that's where we are, I guess.
Well, I mean, we've had staff, you know, very experienced, trusted staff, work really hard on this. And they have come and they have told us, we don't have the money for this. There's no way we can get the cash for this. And not only that, but if we continue to kick the can down the road, we're never gonna be able to catch up. We've been talking about this since November. We identified these issues, I think it was in the, in the reg, and these were all public meetings. I've heard consistently from people. I, I just, I, I, I guess I'm having difficulty understanding why we're not trusting our staff when our staff comes and tells us there's no other way to do this and this needs to get done. And if you don't fund this, I'm gonna come back to you and ask you for money from somewhere else. I, I don't get that.
Okay. So do we have a, a motion?
What is the wording here?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I make a motion to approve, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item as it is written. Approving and authorizing the publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation and resolving other matter incident related to there.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
I just want to make one comment. I, I know that we're kind of split on how, how this process is gonna play out. But I can assure the members of our public and the members of the council, if this is the way the council decides to proceed, that I will, I will make sure that we get the best out of this that we can. And I'll support everything that we do.
Thank you, Mr. Huckabee.
And I would also like to have a discussion. I, um, I would like to hold a meeting next week, just a public meeting, to go over and, and discuss the different priorities and to collect the questions that people have. I think the city should hold one, um, just to hear from people. I, you know, um, I will vote in favor if, if I know we can have this meeting and I know we can backtrack and maybe not issue as, as much, as high a certificate of obligation or consider other elements. Do we have to hold on to these elements if we vote to proceed or we can change things right now? So I think we need to take it, um, and have one public meeting for it. And, um, and, and I do know that I was elected for this and I do know that, that there are a lot of other considerations that are beyond, and there are a lot of other details, and perhaps we can bring the details. I don't want to sell people, I want to hear what they have to say. So can we agree that we can hold a meeting next week?
I've got a motion and a second. Those, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
I need to know before I vote if we can hold a meeting.
Let's, let's vote on the, on the motion that's on the floor and then we can, and then we'll talk about that. We can talk about that, but we've got, we've got a motion on the floor, a motion that's been seconded.
Okay, I, um, before we vote on that, I'd like to amend the motion. I would like to amend the motion to include this as contingent upon an open meeting next week, with the public to hear their input.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Okay, those in favor of the amendment, say, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, most, amendment carries. So now we vote on the amended motion. Those in, those in favor of the, uh, motion made by Mr. Bolden, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
I think I made the motion, so.
You have a motion that was amended. So Mr. Bolden made the motion.
Amended by Ms. Bellinger. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 What are we voting on?
That we will, that we.
Even, even our city, so it's not my fault, even she doesn't know what's going on.
You're voting on approving the resolution to give notice of the intent to issue the COs.
The original one.
And have a public meeting next week.
That we'll have a public meeting next week, but we are continuing on in having the resolution.
So you're approving the resolution and having a public meeting next week if you vote yes.
And what happened to the original motion?
It was amended.
It was amended. There was three, two to amend it.
Okay. So we, yes.
So this meeting next week just?
Wait a minute, the, the original motion that I made, that has passed?
The original motion that you made was amended by the motion that, that Councilmember Bellinger gave. And so then the last thing that we voted on was your original motion amended by Ms. Bellinger.
We haven't voted on it yet.
And we, and we haven't gotten a clear vote on that yet.
So, so can I just ask one question on the meeting next week? A timeframe, I, I think, I'm not sure that all of our staff is here next week. And so, um, I know Chief Kiplinger is gonna be out next week. Um, I'm not sure about the, um, I don't know about Bartlett, he'll be here this, next week. And, and Mr. Bray, is he still here? Are you here next week? So I didn't, I wasn't sure on the timeline for that meeting. I think that needs to be something that, that we discuss as well. And the city secretary is not here either.
I think it's just a meeting to hear from people. We don't have to have, you know, a full presentations or anything, just this is where we are. This is what we're, what, what we're considering, this is what we've, you know, where we are right now. This is what we're looking for and to hear from people, so. Okay, we have a, I call the question.
Don't do that, because they will have to vote on calling the question. Just, just vote.
When you call the question, yeah.
Hold on, because I think that that's important, I mean, I think that that's important, because if we, I, I get listening to people, but people are probably gonna want to be able to ask Chief Kiplinger questions. And if he's not there, that's probably going to inform their decision or their opinion of whether to support something like this or not.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Bolden, I didn't hear you or Mr. Huckabee. Did you vote in favor?
In which, uh, motion that we voted for?
Your, your original motion amended by Councilmember Bellinger's motion to have the public meeting, uh, next week.
So we're going, we had two amend, um, two motions that we have to vote on.
One, one motion that you made that's been amended, that's already been approved.
Oh, okay, so we approved that, okay.
We approved that amendment, now we're voting on your emotion amended.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, you had a question?
Mister, Mister Bold, yeah, I have a question for Mr. Bolden. I'm just, there's a lot of confusion and a lot of voting and I just want to make sure that it's clear. Okay, so, Mr. Bolden, you made a motion, I seconded it. And that was the original motion to pass, to, to move forward with consideration of the resolution. Then Councilmember Bellinger made a motion to amend it. And did you vote in favor of that?
No.
I know he did, but he didn't mean to. No, I'm not, I'm asking him because I know he doesn't know what he's voting for. Mr. Bolden? Mr. Bolden?
Yes, I'm listening.
He doesn't know what, he, he did not know what he was voting on. I think clarification is okay. How am I influencing, but I'm not even going to. Mr. Bolden? Did you vote? Yeah.
Just, we'll just have to vote it down then, I guess.
All right, so, um, I don't, it seems apparent that Mr. Bolden didn't understand that he was voting on the amendment when he cast his vote a while ago. But you do have a vote that has amended the original motion. So if you do not want to have the meeting next week, you have to vote down the motion as amended. You can then go back to the original motion, which is just to issue, proceed with the issuance, the notice of issuance of COs.
Mr. Bolden and Mr. Huckabee, do you hear and understand?
Where you are procedurally?
Yes, you explained it.
Yes, I, are we, we're going back to the main motion, right?
You, 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 no, no, there is one motion on the floor right now, it is the amended motion.
Yes, the amended main motion.
Which includes?
Issuance of, notice of issuance of COs plus a meeting, is what's on the floor at the moment.
So if we vote that down, we go back to the motion?
We, we start over again if we voted down.
We start all over again, right?
Okay, you ready to vote? Those in favor of Mr. Bolden's motion amended by Councilmember Bellinger, those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to that motion, say aye. Aye. Okay, that's voted four, four to one, voted it down. Okay, now we're gonna begin again, is that correct?
You may begin again.
Okay. Mr. Bolden, would you read your motion, please?
I make a motion to approve, uh, and authorizing the publication of notice of intent, intention to issue certificates of obligation and resolving other matters incident and related to.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay.
Go ahead and vote.
Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that carries three, two. Okay, moving on to Jay. Hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the city council meeting scheduled for the remainder of 2022.
Mayor Council, I'll be real quick, um, Matt's gonna pull this real quick, one slide up, if he can find it. This will be real quick, um, we have, um, before you, um, just a series of meetings for the remainder of the fiscal year, or excuse me, calendar year, as you all requested. We're meeting here tonight, uh, obviously we're way into the late hour. Uh, we've got a regular meeting on August the 2nd. Per your, per your direction, you all counseled, uh, canceled August the 9th, our regular council meeting on the 16th. We do have the option, as Ms. Carbo mentioned, if you want to meet on the 23rd or August 30th. That's if you want to meet on that, you surely don't have to, but certainly you can. And then really, just moving down, only go through every month, the one question I have, actually two questions I have, as you roll in October, national out is usually, in Texas, is the first Tuesday of the month. That is a regular council meeting. So do you want to hold a council meeting on that night? Or would you prefer to move it to the second meeting so that you all can participate in NNO? That's number one.
Yeah, I think we've already, I think we've discussed that and that's what we wanted.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so we'll make that notation on the website and Jan can move that calendar. And then the last piece really is at the end of December, uh, you've got a council meeting on December the 20th. Again, four days before Christmas Eve, I know we've got people that may be on vacation or school holidays, et cetera. So that's usually a fairly slow time. And so really just asking, do you want to have a meeting on the 20th? We would not be offended if you would not, so.
I think we're in favor of canceling that, is that right? Everyone should nod your head if that's correct.
I'd like to amend that.
And then, I know it's not on here, but your first council meeting of the calendar year would be January 3rd. So that's a Tuesday, so again, I'm just making you aware, we can email you later, but just wanted to make you a heads up.
Would you consider moving that back a week?
We could, if, if that's okay.
Would you think January the 3rd, move that back to the 10th?
Okay, perfect, that's all I needed, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have completed the regular agenda and we will adjourn to executive session at 10:19 PM after a quick break.
Mr. Bolden, can you hear me?